Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session, virtual meeting for Thursday, October 1st, 2020. The time is now 4:05 PM. Due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting www tempe.gov/clerk for more information. First item on the agenda is the call to the audience for issue review session items. Audience members have up to three minutes to address the city council. Madam Clerk, are there any speaker or comment cards received from the public?
Mr. Mayor, I have one card submitted in reference to items. C is in Charlie, D is in David, and E is in Edward. That's just one card for all three.
So urban forest tree code amendments and park safety?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm happy to take that card now.
Okay, well, I am ready. This item comes to us from Kim Gaffney Loza. She writes in, "Reference items C, D, and E." "Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. You are being presented three topics of great interest to me this evening. This, I am sure, does not surprise you, but I want to address enforcement, which is a concern and I believe to be pertinent to all three presentations. Well-crafted, necessary codes and regulations need adequate and consistent education and enforcement. Codes need to be enforced to protect and replace trees on our commercial properties and vacant lots. Signage has worked in an area of the preserve recently where BMX bicyclists were expanding jump areas. Kudos to the Parks Department. The bicyclists now have clearly posted rules and so far are respecting them. When our Preserve Code regulations are enacted, we need a way to educate the citizenry. These code regulations for the preserve are so necessary. Since the preserve has been created, I have personally observed so many violations. Mesquite wood being harvested, young cottonwoods that were planted around Evelyn Holman Park Pond by the Parks Department have been broken off because they were in the way of fishermen. Trees and shrubs have had branches chopped because they were in the way of fishermen bicyclists, and in the case of a small cottonwood whose trunk was hacked, no reason I could discern. I've seen automobiles, dirt bikes, and large remote-controlled vehicles in the preserve. My husband and I have seen war games, CO2 cartridges, remnants of bottle rockets, and pieces of dinnerware at the base of a Saguaro we believe was used for target practice. The hardest regulation it seems for people to understand is keeping their dog leashed. There are multiple reasons for this, wherever it is regulated, but an important one in the preserve is to protect wildlife. In the preserve, there are road runners, quail, jackrabbits, coyotes, occasional javelina, and most recently spotted by a birdwatcher, burrowing owls. I cannot say enough about the wonderful job our park officers have done. In recently speaking to one of their fellow officers, he spoke of how long and hard they work. The areas of the preserves are vast. I cannot speak for the neighborhood parks, but in the preserve, our park officers need help. They have always responded and followed up on reports I have made, but they cannot be everywhere and see everything all the time. More boots are needed on the ground. I favor for the preserve, when it is economically feasible, a rager program under the supervision of our park officers that can issue citations and understand the environment where they are working in. I do hope our park officers are being consulted on what they think is needed. Thank you to our city clerk for reading this for me, and thank you for listening. Kim Gaffney Loza. And that's it, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Really appreciate it. And thank you, Ms. Gaffney Loza, for your comment. Next up, we're going to go to Item 2A. This is the issue review session items. Item 2A is defining success, Tempe Arts and Culture recommendations. And I'm just going to call upon staff to make a presentation.
All right, there we go. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Ralph Remington, Deputy Director of Arts and Culture in Community Services. I last came before you in August with an update on the AMS Plan regarding our business operations in arts and culture. What you will see today is the final report on that plan. Now rest assured, we will work with the Office of Strategic Management and Rosa's team on updating strategies to support the appropriate performance measures. Bill Blake and Melora Civil are here from AMS Consultants, and they will walk you through the presentation. Afterwards, we will welcome any thoughts or comments that you may have. With that, I will give you Bill Blake. I think you're muted, Bill.
Okay, it looks like he's not coming through.
Are that?
Yeah.
Check, check there, great. Great, and I'd like to be able to share content. Perfect. Thank you. Put this into the right mode. Great, thanks for having us. It's great to be back with you this evening. As you may recall, we've been working with Arts and Culture Division for some time to develop strategies and recommendations for the future operations of this relatively new division, newly constituted division. Our last presentation to you introduced four guiding mandates for the division. This afternoon, we are going to share some of the operational recommendations we have developed with division staff, Ralph and his team. Next and ongoing after tonight, we'll continue to work with staff to develop implementation plans, timelines, and tools. And later, from tonight onward, we'll begin the time of working the plan, which may take several years, but we anticipate staff being able to immediately start utilizing the recommendations to aid in both short-term and long-term decision-making. But first, we want to note that the approach to the plan and the development of recommendations are informed by and aligned with the city of Tempe's strategic priorities as well as by the 2015 Arts and Culture Plan that was adopted by city council. We also synthesized learnings about the division, its operating context, and prior planning to ultimately arrive at the four mandates we shared with you at our last presentation. Each of the mandates was tested through the community input efforts to refine language and understand priorities of the division's stakeholders. The four guiding mandates are, as a refresher, to be transparent. Transparency is about internal accountability amongst staff and with city leadership. It is also about seeking the public's feedback on a regular basis and acting on it. To be outbound. Community stakeholders believe arts and culture should be a point of pride for Tempe and that programs should activate the division's spaces and Tempe's neighborhoods. To be buzzing. Active, vibrant facilities that offer a diversity of quality programs and a feeling that something is always going on at the city's venues. And finally, to be a place of belonging. This mandate seeks to position arts and culture in Tempe as a highly visible, unifying force. Part of implementation planning moving forward is to define the specific metrics that align with these four mandates, which will enable staff to set goals and you, as council members, to gauge progress against those goals. Specifically, the division will be working with the Office of Strategic Management and Diversity to develop performance measures centered around the mandates in the weeks and months to come. We thought it would be a good idea to step back and consider the history of how we got here. Soon after the Historical Society was founded in Tempe in the late 1960s, the Ed Novile Arts Center opened in 1971, and the Tempe History Museum was established in 1972 inside a room set aside in the library. By 1985, the museum was expanded and now managed by the city of Tempe. A few years later, the Public Art Program was established and an Art in Private Development Ordinance was implemented in the early 1990s. In 1998, a group of citizens formed to advocate for a performing arts center, resulting in the TCA opening in 2007. Soon after this, the museum was remodeled to house its current permanent exhibits. And in 2015, an Arts and Culture Plan established a new vision for arts and culture in the city. This spurred hiring of new leadership and pursuit of numerous changes to strengthen the newly-formed Arts and Culture Division, which formally took shape just four years ago in 2016. The point here is that this division has evolved out of necessity and opportunity. Now, today, we have the opportunity to organize around a collective intention. The evolution has continued into more recent years as the TCA has had to transition from what we call a landlord-and-host facility, where much of the content is provided by outside groups, to being a provider of content itself. As a mostly landlord-and-host facility, TCA did not need to do much in the way of marketing and branding itself. The tenants did that. Now, as a presenter and producer, the division takes on a much more active role in programming, and therefore, a much more active role needs to be taken in marketing, branding, and audience development and retention. The division is not yet properly staffed to fully realize this significant shift in the operating model at TCA. With the museum nearing its 50th year, three decades of public art, an active arts center, multiple galleries, a new division with new leadership, and a performing arts center, which has had to shift its operating model, Tempe Arts and Culture includes what might be multiple organizations or entities under a single structure. In many communities, these five program areas you see on your screen would be fulfilled by five or more standalone organizations. This represents both challenges and opportunities for you in Tempe. As the various pieces that make up the division have been assembled, they have each come with their own practices, systems, participants, and staff. The opportunity now is to bring greater cohesion to management, marketing, and programming practices, resulting in greater recognition and participation by Tempe residents and throughout the whole valley. What this looks like is a division that is strategically organized by Activity Center to optimize all aspects of operations, a structure that enables and rewards cooperation and has all parts of the division working with the same set of mandates. The existing organizational structure is strained by past structural changes and is aligned by cost and revenue centers and facilities rather than activity. Operationally, this has resulted in an overly lean and siloed staffing structure, isolated data systems that create undue challenges for staff to track success and make data-driven decisions, and has created barriers to internal cohesion around a programmatic vision. Moving forward, the division now has the opportunity to realign itself around its activities and operate as one cohesive division, leveraging its spaces, programs, personnel, and history to fulfill common goals each year. As you can see on the slide, we are recommending that the division organize around three Activity Centers. The first on the left, Driving Access, which are the programs through which many people first access the division's programs and have relatively low barriers of entry. The Driving Content Center contains the performing arts programs, engagement programs, and the event and production capabilities for the whole division. And finally, on the right, Driving Impact is the Activity Center that supports the facilities, programs, and people that make everything work and get the word out. What we have developed is a model that represents substantial change for the division and achieves strong results. We modeled financial and attendance implications of each recommendations with input from division staff. In the near term, AMS and division leadership also recognize the need for reimagination of the division's activities given COVID-19 and its impact on the implementation of recommendations included in the plan. Acknowledging an established arts and culture tax revenue stream and the opportunity to reinvest funds previously allocated to debt service, AMS modeled a typical future year, or base year, as we sometimes call it, that projects 40% growth in earned revenues, 30% growth in the number of people served through division activities, and 25% growth in the direct investment made in division operations and program capabilities. This plan and each of the more than 30 recommendations within it are framed by the mandates for success. In conjunction with arts and culture leadership, AMS has helped define the strategic direction and develop a plan which optimizes operations with 23 recommendations, aligns marketing and communications with programmatic goals, seven recommendations, and identifies the tools and procedures which support the team in managing and reporting data internally and with stakeholders. There will be many steps to take in achieving each recommendation, and some will be more difficult and take more time than others. But in the end, we expect the division to change and grow substantially and to have a strong, recognized brand throughout the region. In developing a cohesive organizational structure centered around activity, the division will also develop a distinctive and centralized brand, discussed in Recommendation Number 25 in the report. The brand that enables one vibrant division-wide calendar with activities across the division's spaces in the community or online. The division will also proactively invest in relationship-building amongst division staff and with existing attendees and participants and with existing and potential partners, starting with intentionality and a commitment to rentals as an activity which is aligned with or contributes to the mandates, whether by the content brought by the renter or by their fiscal impact, as noted in Recommendation Number 14 in the report. In total, we are projecting a 40% increase in earned revenue once recommendations are fully implemented. This would take these revenues up from $1.2 million a year up to at least $1.7 million, with facility rentals being the greatest contributor. The division will offer a mix of both active and passive engagement opportunities for community members and program participants and invest in off-site and outbound programs, expanding the division's footprint and space inventory. By example, Recommendation Number 20 in the report calls for increased activation of the art park adjacent to TCA, as well, excuse me, as well as the plaza in front of the History Museum. The division will invest in Tempe's artists and its cultural ecosystem through financial and facility grants, residencies, and marketing of their work, as noted in Recommendations Number 4 and Number 10, and will ensure mandate fulfillment with the galleries and stages by balancing partner activities with complementary presented events, discussed in Recommendation Number 12. All of these recommendations lead to an uptick of at least 30,000 people served by the division from 100,000 people per year up to 130,000 people per year, a 30% rise. To accomplish all of these things, the division will invest in itself, most notably in its people. The division will support and expand full-time personnel, cross-train part-time and temporary personnel to be able to offer support across Activity Centers, which we note in Recommendation Number 18, and showcase artists division-wide through multifaceted engagements throughout all division facilities and program locations. Arts and Culture will also leverage its assets by strategically activating its spaces without limitations by specific programs and legacy internal processes. Recommendation Number 31 in the report points to policies and systems for data management and reporting that will enable decision-making and promote transparency within the division with the city and for its stakeholders. Investment in division capacity and programs will grow by 25% and allow the division to maximize its impact on quality of life through investment in properly-supported and staffed Activity Centers, which feeds the other two areas of the recommendations, leading to more attendance and participation and greater earned revenue, which would then support future growth beyond where our report lands. We'll now turn things back over to Ralph to talk about next steps.
Thank you, Bill. Bill, can you bring back up the performance measure slide? The quality of life.
Oh, yeah, sure. Way back at the beginning, I think. Pardon my clicking.
Thank you.
That one.
Yes, thank you. So at the time of this work-study session with the city council, the Arts and Culture Division has received the full recommendations report from AMS and is in the midst of strategizing implementation of the recommendations within it. As of today, implementation will begin in earnest and given your approval, and will require effort from many staff across the division and other city departments as appropriate. We will work with the Office of Strategic Management on updating strategies to support the performance measures if the recommendations are accepted tonight to move forward. As we work through the recommendations, staff will provide mayor and council updates on the implementation process through Friday packets. As the division deputy director, I am eager to get us through the current crisis of COVID-19 and begin the important work of pointing the Arts and Culture Division towards this new and exciting future. Thank you very much. We will be happy to address any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Thank you, Bill. Council, any comments or questions?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I have my hand up, I think. It's Lauren.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Ralph. Thank you for your leadership. I'm so proud that you are leading us, leading Tempe Arts and Culture. And I had a question for Bill. It really struck me when he said that Tempe Arts and Culture is one piece of division. So given like all the vast scope of all that arts and culture does and what it's going to be doing in the future, does it make sense for it to be its own department? And I say that in the context that we broke up public works into three different departments because it was kind of getting big and unruly. It just seemed to make sense. And we're looking at a lot of our city operations with that same mindset, like to reimagine and restructure for our residents' sake, you know? So it seems like Community Services, in some ways, you know, also faces that problem of just having so many different departments. And I'm wondering whether arts and culture should be on its own.
Councilmember, thank you for the question. And I think it's a really good question and one that really should be considered quite seriously after today. Our focus on this work was really focused within the division itself, not its place within the city, although what we're doing now, and given that this division has a quite dominant dedicated funding stream, it would seem to us it would make sense to explore that question going forward. And from the council level down to the staff level to think about what might be best from both a governance point of view, kind of governance and accountability to taxpayers and voters, but also from an operational efficiency point of view of where arts and culture should be within your city structure that would kind of empower and enable it to do its most and best to fulfill those mandates, which I think are really quite important as community initiatives.
Thank you, Bill. It's Lauren. Not so much a follow-up, but asking Mr. Mayor if this could be a discussion, if not now, but in the future, to see if there's any consensus on the part of council to explore this option.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Qube. I believe, you know, we've got Deputy City Manager Stephen Methen on the line. Stephen, is this something that we can actually talk about in a future council conversation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephen here. I would like to take the opportunity to be able to talk with the current director of Community Services, which includes Arts and Culture and our city manager to find out ways that we can review this, look at this, and then report back in some way.
That sounds good, Mr. Deputy City Manager. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone else from the council? Any comments or questions? Okay, I don't see any hands currently, but I would say, I mean, let me turn my screen back on here. Definitely, a lot of recommendations, a lot of great work, Ralph, a lot of great work, Bill. I'm comfortable with what you laid out. I mean, it sounds like a very well-thought-out thorough plan, and I'm definitely comfortable with you moving forward. And if no one else from council has any other, you know, questions or any objections, I think that's the direction we're going to give today. So anyone else, any questions before we close this out?
Councilmember Garland, I don't have any questions, but I'm comfortable and happy with moving forward. It was a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garland.
I'm also comfortable moving forward. This is Lauren Qube.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Qube. All right. Councilwoman Gravaro?
Yeah, I think it's great. Ralph and Bill, this is outstanding, man. I appreciate you guys tremendously, man. I appreciate what you guys are doing with the arts and getting us back on speed and everything like that. So real big thank you for all your hard work and what we're going to do. And then I'm looking forward for the next discussion. We're going to talk about the TCA and what we can achieve over there. So thank you, and I'm saying we move forward.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Ralph and Bill, it sounds like you've got your consensus, and I would just go ahead and move forward. But thank you very much for all the hard work.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Great, thank you so much. All right, next up here. Get back to my... All right, here we go. All right, next up here is Item 2B, grid bike share. I'm going to call upon staff to make a presentation on this, but I wanted to see if there's some way, and this is not to in any way, shape, or form, get through the presentation super quick. I know how much Marilyn wants to give this presentation. But if I could summarize this for a second, and Marilyn, tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, the basic crux of this is the current program that we have right now with the vendor that we're using, we're not, it's, we're hemorrhaging money we're not, it's it's we're hemorrhaging money at a time clearly where we can't afford to be hemorrhaging money during the middle of a pandemic when city budgets are already tremendously stretched. And I think that this is an important program for the city when it comes to offering a environmentally sustainable, low-cost method for residents and people who happen to be visiting our city to get around. But it seems to me that from our my perspective, I would like for this to go out to RFP and see if we could actually find another provider to work with. I think also ASU is in support of that position as well. And my perspective would be, I know that while we would go out for RFP, that would mean things would lapse and the program would stop for the time being. But from my perspective, it's probably the most fiscally responsible thing to do and a way to potentially identify another vendor to keep this program going. Is that kind of conducive?
You know, that is, that's pretty close, Mayor, to what Vanessa is going to end with.
I will go with pretty close, Marilyn. But but I see I see Councilmember QB's hand up, so let's see if she thinks I'm close here.
Thank you for the synthesis, Mr. Mayor, as always, and I totally agree. And we could have a shortened presentation perhaps, although it'd be useful for the public to see. But I agree, we need to go out for an RFP.
Yeah.
Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else have any comments? Well, we can we can let the presentation go forward if that's what we would like. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't I wasn't, you know, stretching something out if we had full agreement already, so.
And, you know, I could probably summarize most of what Vanessa is going to say here.
By all means.
And then Vanessa, you go ahead and work through your slides. But I was going to say, good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm Marilyn Gerroca, your Director of Engineering and Transportation. And tonight, we appreciate the opportunity to spend about 10 minutes sharing the status of our grid bike share program with you. As many of you know, about five years ago, after recognizing a need in our community to serve the first and last mile, the transportation team, as you pointed out, Mayor, partnered with Phoenix Mesa and ASU to launch the docked grid bike share program. The service has been well received, and it enjoyed early success about three years ago. After recognizing those successes of the municipally sponsored program, a number of private providers entered that service space, first dockless bikes, then the dockless scooters. And the micro mobility industry is rapidly evolving as private vendors massage their business models to ensure profitability. Regardless of whether the market can sustain profit for private vendors, they will figure that out. There is clearly a micro mobility need, though, and a first and a last mile need. And the question is, how does the city fit into servicing that need? Vanessa Spartan is one of our transportation planners. She was going to, she is going to present the current status of our bike share program. And at the end, as you mentioned, Mayor, offer some alternative service models for the council to consider. And most, probably most highly recommended is the RFP. So Vanessa, I think the mayor stole your thunder.
Vanessa already stopped like me now. She's like, I can't stand this guy.
We got the answer that I think we're looking for. So I'll go over it briefly, but I'll keep it to five minutes or so. People need me to explain anything I can. So again, we're coming to you for direction on the future of the bike share system. A lot of this was in the council packet, some of the details. You can go to the next slide. This is aligned with the Quality of Life Performance Measure related to the 20 Minute City about multimodal connectivity and residents' ability to meet their daily needs. Next slide. So we'll go over this quickly. I had some information about our existing system and our performance and our options available. We can go to the next slide. So long and short end of it is, you know, we started this system in 2017, about a year after Phoenix started. And and by doing so, we tagged on to the way that Phoenix structured it. So the fee structure was in place, the operation structure was in place. And so we really just kind of built momentum with them. But that did, what ended up happening is we had this agreement amongst three cities, and any changes to that contract really necessitated going through changes with every single city. And it became very difficult to to kind of navigate the way that was structured. In addition, Cory mentioned that ASU has kind of expressed interest on on certain things. ASU right now pays about half of our operations cost. We pay, the city pays, we're obligated to $100,000 annually. And ASU's been historically paying $50,000 of that. That's in question now with the way that it's operating. Next slide. So we have a company that operates our system known as Cycle Hop. Typically, their their contract would end September of next year. But why we're here with you today is that the backend system is run by a company called Social Bicycles, who was consequentially purchased by Uber and then sold off to a company called Lime Bikes. The result of that is that the software and the hardware is not updated. It's becoming quickly outdated with the changeover into the 5G cell network. And so we're the result of which is really poor connectivity and bikes becoming rapidly unavailable, resulting in customers not being able to to use the system as reliably. And and we know that with 5G expanding, that will happen faster. A quick takeaway, in total, you know, Bike Share as as a first and last mile of choice has been successful in this region. Since launching in Phoenix in 2016, there's almost 300,000 trips. In Tempe, almost 100,000 since we launched. But 98% of those are not in a member category. They're people that use it every once in a while or maybe just while visiting the city. And then these two maps really show, the left map shows where the trips are occurring in the downtown ASU and Lake area, and then the right side displays, you know, Marilyn's point about the changes in micro mobility that people are expecting to be able to do first and last mile trips door to door. And that right map shows the trips that are occurring away from grid hubs, and people are paying a financial penalty because of the way that our contracts and fees are set up. So they pay a financial penalty for ending a trip away from a hub right now. Next slide. And so big takeaway is we peaked utilization in 2018. And if you break that down into cost per trip, we had the lowest operation cost per trip in 2018. And then when, as Marilyn indicated, when private bike share and scooter companies came in, that really started to disrupt that that market and introduce a lot more competition into it. Next slide. So as I mentioned, software and hardware is obsolete. Since February 2019, we've been about 82% operational, the the bikes, as far as availability goes. Cycle Hop approached us about remitting the solution, and we agreed to it, but that hasn't occurred. And partially because, you know, they were considering the marketplace in terms of operating with free with free cities. When they approached Mesa about kind of some of the contract changes that were necessary, Mesa decided to end their contract, and Phoenix is still discussing it with with Cycle Hop. ASU has indicated that they're reluctant to renew the funding agreement if the operations equipment upgrades were not to happen. And then we've sent some demand for assurance letters to our operator, Cycle Hop, since they began. At the very beginning of that process, it was really related to the delivery of and getting the system up and running and not meeting some of those contract obligations. But the most recent demand for assurance letters have to deal with that whole operational issue and bicycles being available and and customer complaints. And then so since then, we've been having conversations with Phoenix, Mesa, and ASU, and they've indicated that they're interested in exploring some sort of interagency service provider that might be a different makeup or structure. Next slide. So as Marilyn indicated, there's a lot changing, but based upon what we see changing in the market and what we understand other cities are doing, there's a couple, there's, you know, some goals that we think that we could do in revisiting the bike share system. We believe we can eliminate or minimize our asset investments and our recurring operating expenses. We believe we could provide a diversity of fleet offers offerings rather than just pedal pedal bikes. We might be able to do e-bikes or other sorts of mobility devices. We could introduce a new operations and hubs model using new technology like geofencing applications. We can adjust fees and pricing for an equity category or discounts for transit pass holders. We can explore what we call flexible pricing, but the ability to change to market conditions. And that was one of the big issues that we saw with grid being able to compete over the long term with the the new companies that were introduced in our area. And then we believe that we potentially can do regional consistency as long as we work in collaboration with our cities and ASU. Some of that needs to be explored a little bit more to figure out how that gets structured. Next slide. So Mayor Woods kind of indicated a preference towards option number three, but let me just go through them. Option number one would be to continue our contract with Cycle Hop. However, this is going to require some significant operational hardware changes, and ASU will most likely end support for the program. This would increase our overall costs as a city from $50,000 to $100,000. Option two would be to leverage our shared active transportation vehicle license. That's our licensing system that we are currently using for the scooter companies. Right now, there's no bike vendors because bikes don't compete well. They're going for kind of the the most efficient way of making money. So there's a way that we could restructure that to incentivize bike share. Option three is to terminate the Cycle Hop contract and issue the RFP, as Mayor Woods and Councilmember QB indicated, support for. We can do that independently or partner with ASU or other cities to work out those requirement details. And then option four would be to terminate the program and make no changes to the licensing structure. Next slide. So I think we heard from from Mayor Woods and Councilmember QB if there's any additional comments from other council members or thoughts on this. What staff and Transportation Commission agreed on was terminating the Cycle Hop contract. And we we had agreed on exploring two or three, option two or three, seeing what the pros or cons are of each. But we're here to to hear council's input on this and how you all would like us proceed. So next slide, and I think that's it.
All right. Vanessa, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Got a few council members' hands up. I'm going to first start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Vanessa, for the excellent presentation. I'm in favor of option three, and I just also want to ask about North and South Tempe and the bikes, availability of the bikes to be both in North and South Tempe. So is there a plan or?
Yeah, yeah. So really, if we go the route of an RFP, what we've been talking about is actually having those companies putting in their own assets, and then we can put in operational requirements as to where they would be. One of the things that we would like to explore that we've seen a lot of other cities are doing, it's called a virtual hub or a geofencing hub model. It would allow us to use public bike racks throughout the city. So that means that we can expand beyond where our grid hubs are currently into a much larger network. Additionally, we own the individual racks that are part of the grid hub share system, and so we have the ability to maybe repurpose those and reallocate those in different ways across the city. We will soon, the Transportation Group will soon be kicking off a project called a Mobility Hub Study, and we will be looking at our grid historical data as well as our scooter company data and trying to understand where we want those sorts of hubs to occur citywide, where it makes the most sense to have them, that makes sense.
Okay, well, I just would really encourage you to make sure North and South Tempe are served also.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Much appreciated. Vanessa, awesomely done and abbreviated, since the mayor did steal your thunder. But, you know, he's the mayor, so we're going to let him do those things. But yeah, really great job. I totally agree with staff and the commission. And and I do like the idea of just kind of a little exploration, because you never know. I think if you limit it to just going out for a new RFP without seeing, you know, what that might look like. So I like that idea of maybe incorporating, trying to be a little flexible and seeing how you can kind of work that first and last mile. We know how important that is for a lot of people. So I think as we continue to push and get ridership up more, the idea of having the grid system, I think, can be really, really helpful. Unfortunately, it's probably not exactly where we want it to be now, but I think if we look in the future and, you know, try to be creative and figure out what's going to be the most successful way. So yeah, Mayor, I agree with you, though. I do like the idea of just adding a little bit more flexibility to to see if we can incorporate a little bit more flexibility moving forward. Thank you, Vanessa. Nice work.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. And also, just to follow up, I wanted to give her a lot of credit for when this program first started. I think I remember, Councilmember, you and I at one point and some other council members were at a National League of Cities Conference, and you saw the bike share program. I believe it was in the Washington DC area and came back and thought it would be a great idea for the city of Tempe and really worked the staff to implement. Am I correct about that?
Definitely back in those days, and it was really great to to see how it was successful in other areas. And I think I got to give Eric Iverson some big kudos for that, too, as a staff member, really encouraging, you know, bike share. So yeah, I I think it's a great thing, and I I think it's complimentary to what we're doing. So thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Garland?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vanessa, for the presentation. And I have used those bikes, and I have enjoyed them. So I would not want to see them go away completely. So I am happy with with number three, to see what we can do to try to bring them to a wider area in the city or to be able to still use them, because I enjoyed them. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members, any comments or questions on this item? All right, hearing none. It looks like we're going with option number three. So once again, Marilyn, Vanessa, thank you so much for the presentation. Wonderful. And just, you've got your consensus.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, next up is item number 2C, which is the Urban Forestry Master Plan. And I'm going to go ahead and call upon staff for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Craig Hayton with the Parks and Recreation Team with Community Services. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm joined by Richard Atkins, our city's first urban forester, not just our first urban forester, but the first urban forester in the state of Arizona. So we appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on Urban Forestry Master Plan. As you will hear in detail here in a few minutes, through Richard Atkins, the city took made a significant investment and commitment in the fall of 2017 by formally adopting through mayor and council our first Urban Forestry Master Plan. And one of the first key steps in implementation was making sure that we had somebody who was comprehensively responsible for the city's urban forest, both in the private and the public side. And in August of 2019, we were very fortunate to bring on board Richard Atkins, who is certainly passionate about trees, a wealth of knowledge and experience, but also somebody who's connected not just here locally with the urban forest culture, but also at the state level and then nationally as well. So I really appreciate the opportunity to introduce Richard, and I'll turn the presentation over to him at this point.
Good afternoon, Mayor Woods and City Council members. I'm looking to share my screen. I'm wondering if you can see it.
No.
You don't feel good now?
Yeah, good. It was a little slow on the uptake. Again, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity, not only to serve the city and its residents as urban forester, but to provide you this information regarding the urban forest resource. The information I'm going to be reviewing today directly addresses the council's strategic priority in sustainable growth and development, specifically Performance Measure 4.11, which is to achieve a citywide 25% tree and shade canopy by 2040. Now, as with other strategic priorities, there is overlap with other performance measures, namely two under the strategic priority of quality of life. That would be Performance Measure 3.16, Quality of City Recreation Arts and Cultural Centers, and Performance Measure 3.23, Quality of Landscape Maintenance Along Streets and Sidewalks. So for the brief review, I plan to recognize the city's Urban Forestry Master Plan. I'd like to provide an overview of our urban forest resource, including Tempe by tree numbers and some of the current conditions that we're experiencing. I'd like to highlight a few of our ongoing programs, partnerships, and activities, and present some management strategies to implement for success. And of course, I welcome your thoughts and suggestions. Now, the Urban Forestry Master Plan was adopted by city council in November of 2017. The 38-page document proposes an aggressive citywide goal of 25% tree and shade canopy by 2040 and provides a roadmap for implementation. The three key public areas of focus include parks and open space, streets, and urban hubs. The idea is to engage public-private partnerships through education, collaboration, and implementation strategies. Now, the implementation of the plan involves working across all city departments with Engineering, Transportation, Community Services, and the Office of Sustainability being major partner. I would like to recognize Isaac Shavara and Sean Thompson and Rideaway, Eric Iverson and Scott Balk in Transit, Craig Hayden and staff in Park Maintenance, as well as Braden Kay in the Office of Sustainability for their support in my endeavors today. So as part of the plan, I am to provide information as requested by both city administration and residents, and I serve as a resource for the Parks Recreation, Gulf and Double Butte Cemetery Advisory Board, as well as the Desert Conservation Commission. Now, Tempe's urban forest provides economic, environmental, and societal benefits and values for our city's residents. We currently have 26,500 trees in our inventory with 17,000 trees located in parks and around facilities, and the remaining 9,500 trees being along our rights-of-way and multi-use paths. Now, our forest is quite diverse, with over 100 different species and varieties of trees. Our canopy percentage citywide is currently 13.6%, and that includes public and private lands. This shows an approximate increase of 0.2% since the plan was adopted. Now, our treaty, our trees have a replacement value of almost $57 million and provide $1.2 million in annual environmental benefits for the residents of Tempe. Now, tree canopy increases two ways. One is by planting new trees. The other is by maintaining the mature trees that we already have on sites. But something to remember is that removals do occur throughout the year. We, for example, last year, the city planted 851 trees, but we also removed 731 trees. And so far this year, we have planted 408 trees. But as you can see here, we've already lost 325 trees due to storm damage and heat and drought conditions. While we certainly anticipate planting more this year, I am also planning for additional losses. Now, Parks and Recreation is planning to plant 240 trees per year through the next five-year CIP cycle. This number being based upon planned projects. Now, parks will also try to keep up with replacements as needed. This replacement planting is something that has not been done in the past. This replacement planting is something that has not been done in the past. Now, Rights-of-Way and Transit plan their planting activities, depending upon available funding for upcoming projects and the opportunity for replacement plantings. This generally amounts to between 150 to 200 trees in any given year. But currently, the city does not have an established annual planting goal. Now, the losses I mentioned affect both young and mature trees. The extreme heat exacerbates any previous stress the tree might be experiencing, thus further exposing it to possible disease and insect damage. I am observing some fungal disease issues on trees in both our parks and right-of-way locations. An example here on the left is commonly known as sooty tanker is on some ficus along Mill Avenue. The heart rot in a cottonwood on the upper right part of your screen is an increased risk in one of our parks that requires further monitoring, assessing, and evaluation. Additionally, deferred maintenance and an aging irrigation infrastructure contributes to some of our problems. I am working with staff to establish best management practices for maintenance as well as contractors for industry standards. Currently, I am focusing on planting techniques, species selection, which is right tree, right place, and young tree care while reviewing mature trees and updating our inventory. I have estimated that a tree removal and replacement averages about $800. And considering the maintenance needs of an average tree throughout its life cycle, I'm looking at about $80 per tree per year. Now, all those CIP funds for tree replacement have been included for the first time this year at a reduced amount. The year's supplemental requests for staff and equipment were not evaluated due to our current conditions. We will continue to submit future CIP and operating budget supplemental requests during the budgetary process to help ensure appropriate needs for maintenance activities. Now, this information just depicts the extreme heat that we've experienced over the summer and models what we might expect in the upcoming decades. With the 53-day total days as well as 11 continuous days over 110 degrees, it is important to consider this information in terms of species choice, location, and future staff and infrastructural needs. Now, the city has benefited from numerous relationships to help plant trees in Tempe. Some of these past relationships include the Salt River Project, American Forest, ASU, Trees Matter, as well as corporate and private partners. Here, I just wanted to briefly highlight some of our current programs, partnerships, and activities. I am working to negotiate a new contract for carbon credit planning. This is a collaboration with ASU and Urban Offsets, Inc., where the city receives funds for planting and maintaining trees on city's property. I've also been working with neighborhood representatives to help provide species location information, again, right tree, right place, as they apply for tree planting grants. There's a potential new pest on pine trees in the valley, and we have been working with the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management to monitor populations and determine a management plan that's needed. A photograph of one of the collection devices is there on the top-left side. That's a tree hanging in one of our parks. We actively participate in the ASU Sustainable Cities Network work groups, sharing ideas with other municipalities working toward valley-wide standards of practice. And where I would usually have more in-person community engagement activities planned, I have been partnering with our Rural Conservation Team to conduct some virtual workshops. We had a tree planting workshop this summer where I actually incorporated a live pruning demonstration in my office. And another is planned for November where we're going to address species selection and maintenance. With Arbor Day being held at the end of April, a virtual planting video seemed appropriate, so I worked with Channel 11 on that project. I also wanted to highlight our recognition as a Tree City USA and one of the Tree Cities of the world. These awards are applied for annually and given based on meeting established program criteria and standards and working to implement an urban forest plan. Now, Tempe has been a Tree City USA for 24 years, receiving growth awards for enhanced community programming for the past 14 years. Now, Shawn Thompson in Environment and Engineering and Transportation Department has been compiling this needed information over the years and has since handed the task over to me. I am really excited that Tempe was recently named the Tree City of the World, being selected for the inaugural year of this designation. Tempe is only one of 68 cities worldwide, 27 in the US, and the only city in Arizona to thus be recognized. Our success to move forward with the master plan requires a deeper understanding of the community benefits provided by our trees and a public-private commitment to allocating resources needed to achieve a healthy and sustainable urban forest. Now, this would include planning for and maintaining both species and age diversity and community equity in our planting programs. And I see the strategy as twofold, one on city public properties and one on private properties. For strategies on city properties, the implementation of a sustainable approach to our forest management, creating a staggered pace planting and maintenance program, is very important. We need to be careful about planting a large number of trees at once if we don't have the additional resources to maintain them. As well, this will provide the structural diversity for future urban forest health. Now, maintenance and enhancement of our tree inventory map and canopy data resources is something that I work on daily to collect and update and make better resources to help establish the value of our growing asset. Now, collaboration between Parks and Recreation with Right-Away and Transit on planning and maintenance priorities helps to build our relationship and develop consistency in maintenance standards across the city. And the development of fact sheets and educational materials for staff and administration is important to build that deeper understanding of value and benefits and expresses the need for resource allocation. But as the city maintains just over 2% of the land area within city boundaries, partnering with business and private landowners as the city develops is imperative. We should be leading by example and demonstrating industry standards and forward thinking. We need to continuously review and devise our policy and codes to reflect changes in the environment and our developing urban form. Now, partnering with the community through workshops and educational activities is obviously ongoing, and hopefully we can return to in-person meetings within the year. Developing a public-facing canopy data map, it's important to have the inventory information available to our residents in a fun and educational format that builds interest while increasing knowledge. And then we can use that data to identify underserved neighborhoods and develop outreach opportunities. For depending on the section of the city or the neighborhood that you're in, canopy coverage ranges between 8% and 25%. Thus, a thoughtful, data-driven plan is needed. And finally, providing educational materials for the community deserves to support our city efforts in promoting the benefits of a healthy urban forest. Two, as you can hopefully see, the collaboration is needed, the educational outreach for support, and the ongoing maintenance requirements make the successful implementation of our Urban Forestry Master Plan more than just planting trees. I do thank you for your time and attention. I've addressed where we currently stand and some of the issues and strategies we need to consider moving forward. At this time, I welcome your comments and suggestions.
Thank you so much, Richard. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Craig, as well. Councilmember Navarro, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, no, I appreciate this topic. Obviously, maybe, Mayor, you knew when we tried to save the downtown trees and all that good stuff. So this is right in my alley. Obviously, I enjoy what we tried to do with the tree canopy throughout the city, providing that shade. I think it's important. I think it's important for the heat island effects, all that good stuff, and shade structure, obviously. A few things that comes up when it comes to planting. And I know you hit on it. You know, we plant on our right-aways and trees do die, and then having the replacement on that. Two things, you know, obviously is, I urge you, Council, if we need to start really investing in this, is to make sure that we do have the funds to replant those trees and to replace those trees. Second thing is, though, with the contracts that we have with either the maintenance or the agreements for planting, is I think that if they, if we're asking our vendors to go out, plant these trees, do these things, and then we find out that they're planting certain trees underneath power lines that are going to grow bigger than ever and will eventually be chopped down, that should be on them. I think that we should make sure that what we're planning and where we're planning, we're being very proactive. And obviously, we see what happens when we're doing our power lines. So that's the first thing is, are those contracts responsible for being irresponsible for planting whatever under a power line? Then it comes down to, if we're asking for a certain type of tree, and this is what drives me crazy, is certain areas of town have, you know, a certain vibe or certain, you know, types of trees. And sometimes they're a little bit greener or a little bit taller, yet we seem to plant randomly. And I kind of drive down Royal Road and I see, you know, on the one side of Royal Road, it's just kind of a mixed mass of trees. It looks like it was starting to have some design, but then we just kind of gave up. So I want to urge, I don't know if through us, if we're responsible or those contracts are responsible, is the type of tree that we plant. And some types of trees grow a little bit bigger than other types of trees. I know that, I think it's on the slide that had programs of partnerships and activities as a SISU type of tree, which gets pretty big and actually does very well, you know, in desert conditions. But it also has a lushness to it and a different look that could be utilized in some areas of the city versus other areas of cities. You know, up north by the mountain, obviously, that desert landscape is, you know, palaverdees and all that stuff, and that makes sense. So it's really kind of mimicking or matching the area as best as possible. Or, in addition, matching the existing material that's maybe on the opposite side of a roadway. For example, Elliott Road, and I think we did a good job on this. You have the HOAs that actually do a great job of maintaining their landscape and the trees and what they have. And then our side of the road where we have to maintain, we should try to mimic what some of those areas are and continue that as far as we can to really kind of enlighten that area. And I think that's important to the character. It's important to the character areas of those cities. So I want to urge that we do, that we are mindful of those things when we have the opportunity to do that. So really just matching and having design. So I guess my question is, you know, that I want either staff to answer is, our contracts and what and who is responsible for planting and what they do plant? And are we giving them directions of types of trees to be planted in certain areas? And the other thing is, looking at, you know, our list of trees that we could plant and designing them well, even if we start off with new areas, a little section from Royal Road from baseline up to maybe Guadalupe on the west side of the road, that's a perfect area for a real lushness of trees. And it could be virtually just that. I don't even think we need the landscape, you know, technically underneath, you know. But if we have this lushness of trees, that actually has a benefit to shading those areas. But I don't know if we're taking the time to figure out what that is going to look like, what those trees would look like, and then if they do die, the replacement of those trees. So I don't know if someone can, I know I had some questions out there, but maybe someone could tackle some of those things. And if there is some issues with the contracts, I do want to know about that, the maintenance of our trees and if they are planting them and where. Sorry, that was a lot.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Navarro. I can try to tackle some of those right now if you would like.
Please.
As far as contractor goes, the contractor only plants what they are directed to. And part of my job is coming on is now to make sure that the right tree in the right place has been selected as well as properly planted. So I do work with Rights-of-Way to make sure that that concern is taken care of and that we do not put something back under a power line that's going to have to be, shall we say, pruned in five or six years to maintain that facility. So it is the species selection and choice of which I'm responsible for.
Got it. Thank you. No, I, oh, wait. I was just going to mention something about SRP, and I know they had a program on donating trees to the city and if we're utilizing those programs along with just the volunteer aspects of residents, you know, Tempe leadership, Tempe cares, are utilizing programs to either help us dig holes or buy trees?
As far as the SRP, we've participated with SRP in the past, and I've worked with them and other municipalities. Currently, they do not have a program available. I have good relationship with SRP, so if anything comes up, we can make something like that happen. I also work closely with APS on some of the areas and we can assure that we take care of that. There's lots of volunteer opportunities available. Of course, right now, those are a little minimized for in-person type planting, but I work with a number of groups throughout the valley to help plant trees. It's not always on the Rights-of-Way because I have safety issues with putting people beside streets, but definitely in our parks to help that happen.
That's outstanding, and I do appreciate you, and I do appreciate the direction we're trying to drive this. Obviously, for my take, you know, as one council member is, I'm, I get frustrated sometimes in the past of certain styles or certain trees we plant or trees that we do plant, knowing they're not going to make it versus trees that actually would make it and actually have a bigger shade canopy than other trees that are desert-related, so to speak. And then the other thing, obviously, is design and just the manicure of how it looks in the presentation throughout the cities. And then the following, the follow-up is our contracts and making sure that the maintenance and irrigation and we're, you know, getting them adequate water in those areas. Those are really important to me because I feel that that is what separates a lot of cities is how well we maintain our vegetations, our parks, our right-aways, and how unique they look. I think that builds the character of the city as we go forward. So I just want to mention that to my council colleagues. And I also just want to mention that if we do need to invest in funding to make sure that we are replacing our trees adequately if they are dying, and then we're, you know, obviously replacing them in certain times of year so they will survive, and making sure that our irrigation, if it has to be fixed or issues with that, we need to make sure that we need to invest in those things through our right-aways and our parks to keep that maintained. So I just appreciate the time and thank you guys for letting me vent out.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. I share in your frustration with that. That's why I'm working with our contractors to make sure that we have standards of maintenance that are maintained as well as our own in-house staff. I mean, a lot of our irrigation systems along the right-of-way are over 20 years old and a lot of them are in need of repair. I do work with right-aways on design because we do want to maintain that city character. And as far as replacements, we generally are planning to lose about 2% per year. So that is some of the monies that we had this year that I've got in the CIP to start doing some of that replacement planning. So hopefully, we'll just continue that into the future.
Thank you. Now, I do appreciate you heading this up. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember Cubey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Richard. I am so delighted that we stole you from Phoenix. I think urban forestry folks should go out, like, should become agents, free agents, and we could vie for your talents. So I really appreciate all that you bring to the city. So I really appreciate all that you bring to the city. And what you said really struck me that, you know, we had a 13.6%, we're at 13.6% now of shade in the city and we want to get to 25%. We've only increased by 0.2%, so not even a percent. And I realize we have struggles with our budget, especially with COVID, but I keep thinking about that Chinese proverb that says the best time to plant a tree was seven years ago. And I think if we're going to have a habitable city in, in seven years, 10 years, that we really need to invest in our tree canopy. And I know we have challenges. So I really appreciate all that you are bringing to it with all the outside partnerships. And I know that Silicon Bank is very interested in very sizable quarterly donation. They're working through ASU and they're going to be reaching out to you if they haven't already. Do one question about, sorry, my dogs are growling in the background. Stop dogs. We've asked code compliance to look at different landscaping plans from projects and developments in the past. And, you know, it's, it's easy to tell when a tree is not doing well, but you can't really tell when a tree is gone. You won't necessarily say, oh, a tree was supposed to be here 20 years ago and it's died and it hasn't been replaced. So how are you interacting with code compliance, first of all? And then I have another question after you answer that one.
We are starting to work on our relationship, been working with code compliance. As we go through, it takes their inspectors to go through and make sure that they are looking at what was planned initially and what might still be in place. And if I can work with them and the business owner perhaps, and to put back an appropriate species. I don't, something that won't block signage or be in the way of utilities, be it overhead or underground. So we're, we're just starting to work that through to see how we can progress.
Thank you. I'm really delighted to hear it. And the other thing I wanted to, to ask, and not so much of you, Richard, but to ask the council and hoping for consensus on this, but, but can you come back, Richard, with a, with a review of how other cities are funding their urban forestry programs? Because I'm especially keen on hearing about how programs can be funded outside of the general fund and see what cities are doing that might be unique or not so unique. But I think that would be really valuable to learn, maybe in our Friday packet and want to hopefully gain consensus about that tonight. And with that, I am, thank you for all your work, Richard, and hope that we can more deeply invest in this program, which I remember it went through, what? Two and a half years of a public engagement. Bonnie Richardson did a masterful job of bringing the public into this decision-making. And I just hope that we can really follow through with this, with this mission. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words, council member. I can look into other cities and get that information for you. I'm familiar with most and honestly, it is a lot of general fund monies unless depending on where the forestry or the urban forestry department seems to be housed, whether they're in places where they can get other funding or whether they have to rely on grant funding. Most of the time it comes out of the general fund and you know where that leads to. So I will actually get some, on some research and I'll get that back to you and council.
And Mr. Mayor, just a few more words. Thank you so much, Richard. I just, I want to make sure that we have consensus because I can't direct you to do that. But I think that would be valuable to hear what other cities are doing and what, what opportunities are out there. And I do want to say lastly, Joel, you are such a champion of trees. From the time I've gotten on council, you've been the person who has been championing this effort. And I really so appreciate your leadership on this. And lastly, I do want to mention that I know that Tucson does have a green infrastructure fund that is sort of outside of the general fund and that might be an interesting opportunity. But those might come up when we do that general review if council agrees.
Sounds good, Councilmember QB. Just before we move on to the next thing, I wanted to make sure that we do have consensus from the council on that one specific item that Councilmember QB requested, which is just to allow Richard to go out there and do a little bit of additional research that he would then bring back to the council a little later day. Are we good with that?
I'm good with that. I'm, I'm good with it.
Go for it.
Yep, I'm good too. All right, Richard, you're good on that front. So thank you, Councilmember QB. Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I had the best time sitting with Richard last week and talking about our urban forestry master plan, where he came from, what he's doing, the, how you have to actually go out and inventory 12,000 trees. I was so incredibly impressed. You know, and we did have this great discussion about the sad things that are happening with the trees that we're losing. I think, Richard, you had mentioned, I think it was 300 trees that we have lost so far this year. And I had mentioned to him about the trees that I see in neighborhoods. And my next door neighbor had the tab two taken down. And so Richard has kindly agreed to have a Web X event. We're going to do some type of tree event. We don't have it out on social media yet, but it's going to be Thursday, October 8th at 6:00 PM. And he has agreed to answer questions and talk a little bit about heat stress and on trees and answer questions from the residents. So we will be posting that on our social media. And I just want to say, Richard, I think you do an amazing job. This presentation was incredible. Again, like, like Councilmember QB said and Joel Navarro said, it's so important for us to have these trees in the city and all the things that you're doing to make that happen and to grow that canopy. I just want to tell you, thank you so much. And I cannot wait to work with you next Thursday and talk to people and then this, in our residents and our neighborhoods about trees and keeping them safe and trying to figure out what to do about the, the stress on them. So thank you.
Thank you, council member. I appreciate that. And I am looking forward to that event next week. It's going to be a good time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel stole all my questions, so Joel, shame on you. Anyway, I agree with what Councilmember QB and Navarro said in their, in their remarks. So most of them have already been answered. But I just want to, you know, reiterate that our extreme temperatures continue to, to become more extreme. And I think we need more trees than ever now. And I just want to also make sure that we're maintaining the trees, making sure that they're having water. And because, you know, I don't want trees to be planted and not maintain them. So I just want to make sure that we're maintaining them with plenty of water. And also I think we should try to get the SRP program up and running again. So maybe Mr. City Manager, if you're on the call, maybe you could follow up with SRP and see if we can get that going. And, and Richard, I, you know, I really liked the presentation and I love how you're doing your asset management. That's right in my wheelhouse and it's so important. So and, and as far as, you know, working with code enforcement, Jeff in code enforcement is awesome and I, I could see you working really well with him. So I, I'm really optimistic about that relationship and, and working closely with code enforcement. And I just, like I said, I mean, I would like us to really try to find more money and plant, and plant, really increase our, our planting of trees at a much faster rate. So you have my support on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. I appreciate that. Yeah, the extreme temperatures in the way that that's progressing and what we're looking for in the future, it does make a challenge for species selection. And that's something that I really take seriously when I'm putting in a plan together for planting, whether it be right of ways around a facility or in a park. And to your point, yes, we, we don't need to be planting if we don't have the irrigation or the maintenance facilities to take care of the trees moving forward. So that's something that I try to put all that together when I'm putting a planning package together. But I thank you for your comments.
You bet. We're lucky to have you, Richard.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Yeah, I, I agree, Richard. I think you did an awesome job. It's been great to have you on board and really just kind of understand where we are and where we can go and where, where we're doing well and where we're not, right? So I think that is very valuable. I agree with, you know, going last sometimes, everybody spilled all the thunder. When Joel talks for 20 minutes, it's really hard to get anything in because I have to give Joel a hard time. But, you know, he has definitely been a diehard in regards to making sure our right of ways, our trees. And, you know, and he was the first one that brought up code, code compliance. So I appreciate you wanting to work with code compliance. I think that's essential because I do know we have a lot of developments that mean well. But if nobody's holding them accountable for the landscaping that is promised, you know, there's really no reason for them to replace it. So I think that's essential. One of the things that we definitely need to make sure gets worked out. I know you said you're trying to work with code compliance, so it would be great to see that really come to fruition. I think that would be really beneficial. And Councilmember Garland, I love your idea of you and Richard coming together and talking to our community about these, about what's happening with our trees. Because, you know, I think I'm going to be on that call is I've got a really large green palm that we've had forever and it just didn't make it over the summer. So, you know, how to safely take it down and what, how to replace it would be super helpful, I think, for so many people and with, with the stresses I think that everybody's been having too. So I, I do welcome that. I do know that, you know, our, our investment in urban forestry has definitely been an evolution and, and I don't take that very lightly. And I know it's important to be fiscally responsible. And if I remember right, I think, you know, our investment is like 2.2 million in our CIP over five years. But it would be great, I think, too, Richard, as you go and you look, what, see what other people are doing, how their funding's coming, just to maybe if, if the council's okay with it or I could just get this, this information from Ken or Andrew, is just to see our evolution and our investment and what that's looked like from the last 10 years forward. Because I know we are definitely at a higher investment rate now than we've ever been. And it would just really great to see how that investment has made an impact. So if, if that's possible, that would be great. If that's a little bit too much work, I'm more than happy to, to work with Ken and get that. It'd be great to see that side by side also. So I, I appreciate the work. I, I want to continue to do it. I think it's, it's just really necessity for the appearances of our city and, and makes it look like the Tempe we know. So thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Richard, thank you for your work.
Thank you, council member. Just to kind of touch on what you were just asking, we have to present in order to be a Tree City USA as one, as well as one of the Tree Cities of the world. We have to do a per capita calculation of how much money is spent within the city. And so during all the 2000s, we averaged around $3.50, $3.15, $3.70 per capita. This last year, 19, when I did the figures, we were at $6.71 per capita. So we are picking up the pace, so to speak. We spent a total last year of $1.29 million in urban forest management.
Wow, look at you, had that right off the top of your head. So thank you for that. That's good to know. I mean, that's a double, doubling of per capita number. So that's, that's, that's a really good investment. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Any other council members' comments or questions? All right, it sounds like we've pretty much got consensus to move forward here. Once again, Richard, great work on all of this. I think, you know, you really are a, a huge asset to the city of Tempe with your background and knowledge with relation to this subject. And yeah, I think that, you know, we've sort of, I can't really sum up everything that's been said, but I know some of the conversation was just around, you know, making sure that we continue to, you know, kind of fill out our tree canopy because given the extreme temperatures and given everything that's going on, it's even more crucial and more important to add necessary shade, add the necessary oxygen that trees do add to our community. But also just from a pure beautification standpoint, the tree canopy, just the way that it looks and the way that it protects certain neighborhoods and provides a certain kind of, certain kind of aesthetic, quite honestly, is something that's really crucial to many of our neighbors, whether they live in a neighborhood with a lot of trees or just happen to drive along major arterials or collective streets and see the trees present. So I think this is really crucial to who we are as a city. And I'm happy that we've been recognized for, you know, being some tree forward. And I think that the entire council wants us to continue with that. You know, we always want to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible in whatever we happen to do. But just know that, you know, tree canopy, fulfilling our promises to, to the tree canopy is extremely important to all of us as council members. And I would definitely urge you to move forward from everything I've heard from the entire council today, unless you have any further comments or questions.
No, I thank you for those comments, Mayor Woods. I appreciate the, the other council members. And I look forward to coming back to you with better information as we move forward with our tree canopy growth.
Thank you so much, Richard. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Item 2D, Proposed Preserve Code Amendments. I'm just going to go ahead and call upon staff to make a presentation here. Hey Craig, you are on mute.
All right, a nice. There we go. Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor and Council, Craig Kaiton, Deputy Community Services Director with Parks and Recreation. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you and provide really what is a follow-up presentation to one that Bonnie Richardson gave in October of 2017 before Papago became Tempe's second preserve. Unfortunately, we've realized that there's been a slight delay in actually bringing these preserve code amendments to you, which will actually be coming on a future on to council, regular council meetings for your formal adoption. But we wanted to make sure based on a delay on our behalf that we actually did provide this information, not as it relates to the potential of Papago becoming a preserve, but because it has become a preserve. So want to start by framing the conversation around probably our central performance measure under the Quality of Life Council Strategic Priority. Performance Measure 3.16 really recognizes the experiences that we provide through our physical infrastructure, through parks and recreation. We recognize that we have an incredibly diverse parks and recreational system of which our preserves, our two desert preserves are a key piece. So as Richard mentioned in the previous presentation, we also do have some sub-performance measures that are equally as important as 3.16, like the tree and shade canopy, compost use. But we're really going to focus on 3.16 for this presentation. We believe it really is that all encompassing performance measure for this presentation. And for this brief, brief presentation, I'm going to run through some very brief background information on the purpose and locations of our two preserves. We're also going to talk about, because of the differences within the preserves, there are many similarities, but there are some differences that really require us to look at the code as Papago came on board and make some changes. Review briefly at the end, what has really led us to where we're at here today. And then as always, if you have any questions during the presentation, I'd be happy to answer on that point. But we will have some specific time at the end for any questions and comments that, Mayor, that you or the council may have as well. All right, so the purpose of a preserve, just from a high level, really is to make sure that we've established habitat for vegetative and wildlife resources, that we provide key protections for some incredibly rich and diverse cultural, paleontological, historical researches, or resources within our city. But also that we can balance those two things out with appropriate uses, recreational, educational, cultural uses. We realize that these things can coexist in a balance. And finally, we just want to highlight the fact that in an urban environment, we can actually still heighten the appreciation, the enjoyment of the desert Southwest. We're extremely fortunate, just really steps from downtown Tempe and even in downtown Tempe with a B-P preserve, that we do have such unique desert preserve areas. So it really is a testimony to the diversity of Tempe and its parks and recreational system that we would have desert preserves. And these really are the key founding principles of why preserves really are important and really highlight the preserve purpose. So we're going to spend the next two slides highlighting the two different preserves within Tempe. So certainly an older map here in the middle. Hayden Butte Preserve is actually a relatively small preserve when compared to Papago, just over 25 acres. It became a park for the city in 1973. And then it was designated a preserve in 2002 by council action. And we know Hayden Butte certainly is an incredibly rich and diverse area when it comes to recreational uses, cultural, historical, biological resources. It, it is used educationally. It really is an amazing area, right, again, right in the heart of downtown Tempe and really provides some, some rich, rich opportunities, parks and recreationally, that really help satisfy and really bring about meet and community needs. So on the other side, Papago Preserve is much larger, almost two times larger than Hayden Butte Preserve. And it's actually part of, as everybody knows, part of the larger Phoenix metro area regional park of Papago, which on Tempe's side also includes areas like Rolling Hills Golf Course and the developed portions of Papago Park. But Tempe's Papago Preserve has, unlike Hayden Butte, which is really one area, has multiple different subzones within it. We certainly have water areas, we have lakes, we have ponds, we have multi-use paths that go through, we have houses, we have riparian areas. It is really a lot more of a diverse area from a recreational opportunity. But it also is something that has varied in its designation as a preserve. It was designated preserve in 2018 after popular vote through a charter amendment. So a little bit different than Hayden Butte Preserve. And really that charter amendment came about because of the support and the action of many folks in North Tempe. We have Darlene Justice, Deb Gamebrley at the time, and then Kim Gaffney Loza, as well as many others, that really were champions for bringing onboard the potential of Papago Preserve back in 2017 that really made it a reality as it came on the ballot. that really made it a reality as it came on the ballot in 2018. So now we have these two desert preserves, but certainly have a lot of similarities. Uh, but there are also some things that are different, that really require us to look at our code. And these code amendments that we are proposing were actually part of the charter amendment process that led to Papago Preserve, um, getting in front of voters back in 2019. All of the code recommendations, the changes that we are proposing, um, were done, um, in conjunction with the Parks Recreation Golf and W Cemetery Board. Bonnie Richardson led that effort and also the public effort, um, to make sure that we not only amended or proposed some code amendments with the Parks Board, but we also did it in a public fashion through the board meetings, but also had some public meetings, um, and sought some public input. And then the Parks Board was able to make those recommendations, um, that we see here just listing some of the changes that really will put in a couple of different categories. One, it opens up some uses. We defined ours, um, as 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM instead of 6:00 to 10:00 as currently is over at Hayden Butte. We've also allowed some activities that weren't previously allowed at Hayden Butte, just because of the change, um, in the areas between Hayden Butte and Papago. We'll activities, for example, you can't ride a bike on Hayden Butte or even, um, ride a horse on Hayden Butte Preserve. But we're allowing that because that is acceptable use, historical acceptable use within the Papago, um, park area before it became a preserve. But we've also added some additional restrictions. Um, we certainly want to be cognizant of the heat and the dryness with smoking and campfires. No remote control activities or any other off-road activities, um, really limiting access vehicular-wise, um, to those that are authorized, um, city vehicles. And then certainly we have provided additional languages that relates to urban camping, um, by permits, and then also talking through structures. And we know that there certainly have been, um, conversations, and we've worked with our attorney's office, with great partnership with Human Services and the Police Department, really to address encampment scenarios, to make sure that we are following proper protocols and making sure that we actually are, um, addressing those when they do come to us as, as notified by the public or as we notice them as well. So we want to make sure that we are following through and holding folks accountable, but leading with services as it relates to that piece of it. So, um, just looking at the overall process, this was a process that really did start back three years ago, gauging, um, not just the charter amendment piece, um, and whether that was suitable, but also these code amendments that we are, um, going to propose in future council meetings. But as I mentioned previously, really were backed up through public meeting comments. The Parks Recreation Golf and W Cemetery Board in September of 17 took all those comments, um, and then made some modifications, um, that are included within these, um, code amendments that we're proposing here tonight. We know in March 2018, um, the, I think it was 89% of the voting public that, that took part in the charter amendment vote was in favor of making Papago a preserve. And then we have been very fortunate after the work of, uh, Vice Mayor Keating, uh, Councilmember Adams, Councilmember Navarro, and then the support of Mayor and Council, um, at the end of 2019 to actually create a new commission, which had its first meeting, Desert Conservation Commission, in June 2020. We're very excited, um, to be working with that incredibly diverse group of representative and experts. And we're here tonight at a work-study session in October, um, before we will be proposing these code amendments at regular council meetings, um, to make sure that they're part of the public hearing process. So, that really is an overview of what has brought us to this point. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments, um, you may have.
Thank you very much, Craig. Really appreciate it. I've got a couple of hands here. I'm going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Craig, for the excellent presentation. And, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, having you join me for Join Jennifer this Saturday at 1:00 for our co-annus presentation. So, thanks, Craig, uh, for, for all your help. Uh, you're a very valuable employee, uh, at the city of Tempe, and, and we're lucky to have you. Um, so I just want to, uh, say a few things. I'm supportive of the proposed, uh, code amendment. I think it's a great idea. Um, I'm very happy about our commission, our, um, our Desert Preservation Commission being, uh, up and running now. And, uh, I really feel like we need to have a lot more attention paid to our, um, to our preserves. And so I'm, I'm just, I'm happy that we have the commission, and they're just so important to our community and, and just so precious, uh, in our community. And all the animals and all the plants and all the hiking trails. And I want to just, I want to just really focus on paying more attention to them. And, uh, so let us know what, what we can do to support you, Craig, um, in that mission. Also, I have to throw in that I would love to have our park rangers come back. They really helped a lot with our preserves and, uh, they, they just, you know, they were city employees, and they were very successful in improving our parks. So I'm just throwing that out there again, that I think that that would be a huge addition to our parks, to have our, uh, our, our park rangers back. So, uh, thank you again for, um, your excellent presentation, and you have my support 100% and to improving our preserves. And please let us know what we can do to provide resources for you to improving them, um, in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. It's so funny, your conversation about park rangers, you're almost, you're almost, uh, jumping ahead to Item 2E. You are, you, you're on top of it, so, uh...
Sorry, I just couldn't resist. I'm not the park ranger.
No worries, no worries. I appreciate it. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Navarro.
Just, just a big recognition, um, to Craig and staff. And I know this is, uh, quite a, um, complex issues at times, especially with homeless camps and everything like that. I'm trying to mitigate that. I agree with Councilmember Adams. We definitely need to get those park rangers back in that area. And, um, really just to get, uh, obviously for the homeless camps, but not only for that. It, it, it's, it's great to have, um, pseudo, I guess, PD representation, get to know the people, understand, um, who's down there, and it's a true resource, uh, in the end, um, even to get people help, um, ordering to navigate people or whatever it may be. So I, I do, uh, embrace that. I'm glad that the commission is up and running. That is, uh, something very cool, um, Darlene Justice and, and Kim and, and others in the North Tempe area, that helped, um, stir this up. Only a benefit to us and the community to take pride in this area because it is a, a jewel, um, for what Tempe's character looks like, which is totally unique than any other area of the country. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate that you have time on this.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, thanks for the presentation, Craig. It was great. I'm obviously very supportive of, uh, your recommended changes. Want to give a shout out to Darlene Justice and Kim Gaffney Loza for not only prodding us to make it a preserve, but then, you know, helping us get the Desert Parks Committee going. And I want to thank all those that have been selected to serve on it, and of course, Councilmember Navarro for getting that committee, uh, formed. So, thank you so much, uh, Congress.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Um, I, I wanted to sort of, you know, quickly echo, I am completely, uh, in support of everything that Vice Mayor Keating just said. So I won't repeat all of it, but everything he said, you can count me as ditto. So, uh, Councilmember Cubey.
Yes, just to echo your comments, I support the proposed code amendments as well. Thank you so much, Craig.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Let's do, uh, Councilmember Garland, and then Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say, Craig, thank you so much for the presentation, and I am in support of the code amendment changes. Um, I just also want to throw out there to Darlene and Kim, thank you for the love and care that you've given Papago Park until you convinced everybody else to do the same and take care of it the way that you take care of it. I just want to tell them thank you, and thank you for the desert commission. I think it's a wonderful thing. You guys have done a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Hey, Mayor. Hey, thanks, Craig, for all your work trying to pull all this stuff together. And, um, of course, too, I think all the council members and the vice mayor said it really well. You know, just a great appreciation to our many residents that continue to care and put forth effort and energy to be able to make things like this happen. So, you know, it's exciting, it's a great partnership, and it just really shows what a unique community we have. So, I'm all in, Mayor. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, Craig, it looks like you've got your direction. I, I don't hear a single person that doesn't want to go forward with this. So, once again, as always, uh, just really appreciate the great presentation and all the work that's led up to this, and it, go forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Next up, council, we are on Item Number 2E, which is the Park Safety Update. And I'm going to have staff make a presentation about this. I just wanted to just give a little brief, what, 20-second thing beforehand. This came about because I know we've gotten several emails over the last three months or so just regarding, uh, park security. Uh, we had, uh, G4S in our parks. I know do, do, do a prior contract. It was a pilot program. The funding I know expired for that program on June 30th of 2020. And I think since then, we've gotten a lot of emails and correspondence from residents in neighborhoods talking about, hey, we appreciate the fact that the council took some action and did something about this. We know the pilot program funding has expired, uh, but at the same time, we're looking to see what the council might be willing and able to do, uh, moving forward to ensure that we, uh, have park monitors or park security in place at all of our various parks throughout the city. And so I began kind of having, having a discussion with staff about what we might be able to do and asked them to kind of bring back a few options that, you know, for the council to consider. So with that said, these staff's going to present some options, and we'll just, uh, talk about consensus at the end of the discussion. So with that said, go forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is Craig Keating, Deputy Community Services Director, again. Um, I'm going to kick the presentation off, and I'm joined, um, on this presentation by Commander Scott Smith from Police Department, and also Nicole Stevens, with our human, with our Homeless Solutions Supervisor with the Human Services Department. So, we're here to provide an update on park safety, and we certainly understand that in providing recreational experiences, that those surrounding safety are certainly the, of our highest concern. So I want to frame the conversation around a very comprehensive performance measure, 1.23, under Safe and Secure Communities. We recognize that the feeling of safety in parks is certainly something that is incredibly important, but it's also affected by multiple factors. We recognize that type and condition of assets within parks plays a huge piece. Mayor and council, you've dedicated more than $60 million to our capital improvement program through Parks over the five-year program. So we recognize that as a huge piece of this. But we also recognize maintenance practices, the programs and activities that we offer are, are right alongside it as well. But also, we have a responsibility to monitor and then address any negative behavior. So this, this presentation is really going to focus on that last, last part, focusing on park safety through security. And before I turn the presentation over to Commander Smith, I'm just going to review, uh, what he is going to be providing informationally here tonight, which is background and, and implementation information. He's going to be talking through, um, impacts, reviewing impacts and, and the outcomes of the program, uh, before finally presenting some options for your consideration and input at the very end of the presentation. At this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Commander Smith.
Commander Smith, if you're speaking, your mic is not on.
Sorry about that. All right. We'll try again. Take two. Good evening, uh, Mayor Woods and members of council. Uh, my name is Scott Smith, and I'm the North Patrol Commander for the Tempe Police Department. Uh, one of my duties is to assist with managing the security, uh, park security program. Uh, and before I begin, uh, I'd like to thank Ms. Gaffney Loza for her kind words, uh, during the public comments section concerning our park officers. They do, in fact, work very hard, and, and we definitely appreciate their support, and we appreciate her support in recognizing their, their hard work. We're going to talk about, uh, Council Priority 1.23, the feeling of safety in parks. Uh, and as most of you are aware, the park security program was initiated in response to some community concerns voiced to, uh, city council, uh, the Parks Department, uh, and the Police Department. Uh, the program, uh, was supported, um, in, in initiating this pilot program by the Police Department because we had data on escalating incidents that were occurring in our parks, uh, and we identified that as an area of focus, uh, by the Tempe Homeless Solutions Task Force. And so in 2018, uh, we started a pilot program, uh, and if, if we can advance the slide. Prior to forming the, uh, Parks Community, or the Park Security Program, uh, the annual community satisfaction survey revealed a downward trend in residents' satisfaction, uh, of their feelings of safety in our parks, and, and we have 53 of them, uh, and, and their feelings of safety, uh, especially indicated a downward trend during the nighttime hours. So when we took a look at what we needed to do and what we wanted to try, um, we, we saw that we had the G4S, uh, security contract, which was a natural selection to provide security, uh, for this pilot program. They already had our contract, uh, to provide security at our municipal facilities to include City Hall, Courts, Transit, the Library Complex, uh, the West Side and Escalante Community Centers, and the Tempe Center for the Arts. And so when we were putting together the parameters of this pilot program, uh, we, we wanted to design it to actually fit within our current, not only Police Department structure, but our homeless outreach and Human Services structure. And so we brought on G4S and a select, uh, number of security personnel. And what we wanted to do was provide a consistent, invisible, and positive presence in our parks of uniformed security to deter crime and violations and park misconduct. We want to instill a sense of safety in our parks, uh, for park visitor, uh, visitors, uh, through visible, uh, walking patrols and proactive patrols of our parks. Uh, we wanted our park, uh, security officers to communicate with, uh, educate and establish relationships with our frequent park visitors who go to our parks on a, on a routine basis, uh, daily. Uh, and, and we wanted to start developing positive relationships with them in communication. Uh, we wanted to provide connections to our Human Services Department, uh, for individuals who are in need and needed to be connected up with services. And we wanted to have our park security officers, or officers, be a liaison, if you will, between various city departments to be, uh, Tempe Fire Medical Rescue, the Police Department, Parks Maintenance, uh, Homeless Outreach, things of that nature, uh, for needs as appropriate when they are doing their patrols. And so, um, when we take a look, uh, the program was structured and managed under the supervision and direction of the Police Department, uh, and commanders, lieutenants, and sergeants assigned to the Field Operations Division. Uh, this included contract management, workload assignment, community feedback, interdepartmental solutions, uh, for implementation, uh, and the professional compassionate and lawful delivery of police and security services. The G4S personnel that were selected to participate in this program, uh, underwent background investigations, firearms-related certification through G4S and the state of Arizona. Additionally, and this is, this is critical, um, those selected for the, the program received, uh, two-day training, uh, with the first day being, uh, from the La Frantera Impact Mental Health Group, uh, to provide service, uh, in training to, um, help better identify and communicate with individuals, uh, who may be experiencing some sort of mental crisis or, or mental disability. Uh, and that included, you know, de-escalation techniques, how to communicate in a, in a proactive manner. This was the same training which select Tempe Police Officers get, uh, and, and have attended. Additionally, um, our G4S, uh, received training by the Tempe Police and Tempe Human Services, uh, Departments Hope and Care Seven. Uh, they received information and education in terms of what services are available and how to connect up people with services that the city offers, to include, uh, and, and as well as information about, uh, Tempe Park Code of Conduct, social services resources, how to use the police radio, even though, uh, part of the municipal security contract, they are already operating on our radio system. Uh, report documentation, they received training in implicit bias. And at the culmination and the end of the training that our security personnel went through, uh, they, uh, we, we created a scenario-based training regimen. Uh, essentially, at the end of the course of training, we set up, um, real-life scenarios using actors to see, uh, if these individuals retained the information that they were trained and were able to use it effectively, um, before they were put out into, into our parks on patrol. If we can move to the next performance measure slide. Once we deployed, uh, our, our park officers to our, to our, um, parks, what you'll notice in the slide here is that, uh, we started the pilot program in 2018. And prior to that, you would see a downward trend, uh, for various types of feeling and safety in the parks. Whether they're city parks, desert parks, uh, daytime, nighttime, things of that nature. We were on a downward trend, and that matched up with the complaints we were receiving from our community. Once we implemented the park safety program and the security program, uh, we started to see when we, we resurveyed our community, that during the course of the pilot program, we started trending in the right direction. And I want to bring your attention to the yellow bar there, which is the neighborhood daytime feeling of safety in the parks. Um, you, you see a trend, especially from 2018, uh, you're getting up into the higher 70s of customer satisfaction and feeling of safety in the park. Now, the council priority and performance measure of 1.23, our goal is by 2029 to have an 88% citizen satisfaction survey. And so, um, really with any public safety type of, uh, program, you're looking at, at three things. And, and that's essentially, um, you know, for people to feel safe and act accordingly in parks, you're looking for, uh, engineering, is, is the park, uh, and, and facilities around it engineered properly and in good, good working order. For those individuals that, uh, may be violating park conduct rules, is there good education and relationship building to, uh, bring people into voluntary compliance with park conduct rules? And the last part is enforcement, and that's really the last thing we, we... thing we, we really wanted to do, but we really want to put an emphasis on engineering and education and bringing G4S into the fold here for this pilot program was a key component to that and weaving them into, to the whole, the holistic human services fabric that we have. If we can advance the slide into outcomes. So what we saw during the park program and the pilot program is that the residents' feeling of safety in the parks increased. And that was depicted by the graph that we had earlier. We also saw within the Police Department that our calls for service, general offense reports, our street checks, our arrests in parks trended downward because we had a consistent presence in our parks of uniformed personnel that were making good contacts, establishing good relationships, educating people as to what park conduct was about, bringing people into compliance and developing really good relationships with people. When we take a look at what types of work and workload that our G4S security personnel are involved in, when we look at 2019 and 2020, we reveal that during park checks, chief or staff engaged in meaningful work and were instrumental in educating. And also, when it came to the mayoral proclamations during COVID, they were, they were critical in making contacts to enforce mayor proclamations and educate people about that, especially when park communities were closed. So in 2019, our park officers responded and dealt with 726 criminal damage incidents in our park, 602 drug paraphernalia or narcotics-type incidents in our parks. And that could range from anything, you know, needles or drug paraphernalia found in an unsafe manner to things of that nature. They responded to 58 subject down calls, people that, that appeared to be in medical distress and needed some sort of assistance. They responded and dealt with 283 trespassing concerns within parks and they assisted our police officers 398 times. Additionally, in 2020, up to June 13th, again, our park officers responded to 316 criminal damage incidents, 213 drug paraphernalia or narcotic incidents, 10 subject down calls, 67 trespassing type calls. They assisted police department and police officers 346 times. And when we had proclamation, when that went into effect for COVID, they responded, investigated and helped educate, bring people into compliance 474 times between April and June. So they really did serve a fantastic purpose. And more importantly, as part of what they did, and we talked earlier about the relationship and holistic nature of how they weaved into the fabric of not only the Tempe culture, but how we wanted to make our parks safer and provide that feeling of safety and security to our parks for everybody. They really folded in nicely into not only our current park security officer program, but the Human Services and Hope team. And so what I'd like to do is turn it over briefly to Nikki Stevens, who is our supervisor over our Hope team. And she can kind of provide you some of the information that she was able to learn and experience with G4S. Nikki?
Hi, Mayor and Council.
Quick thing to Nikki. Thank you, Commander Smith. I just see Councilwoman Adams' hand up. Nikki, before you get started, do you want to ask your question now or would you like to wait till later?
Wait till later. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Nikki, feel free to go forward.
Okay. One of the things that stood out to me the most about the G4S model was the training that was provided by Tempe Police Department, Hope and Care Seven that Commander Smith spoke about earlier. The two-day intensive training allowed Tempe Human Services to educate G4S about the local resources that encompass the human services delivery system. I thought that it was comprehensive and a great model of ensuring that G4S was prepared to interact with the various populations in our community. This included information about accessing homeless services, crisis navigation and local resources in the city of Tempe. The feedback that I had received from the people that Hope serves is they actually felt safer in the parks with the G4S presence. We know that people experiencing homelessness are often the victims of crimes themselves. Sometimes G4S would be the ones to get them medical care or connect them to other social services enacted as an extension of the overall human services system of care. They developed relationships, I can't talk. They developed relationships with people in the parks and they got to know them as individuals and developed a greater understanding of the population that we serve. For example, there would be times when Hope was looking for someone because they had come to the top of a waiting list for housing. Hope could contact G4S and they would assist us in locating that person or let us know if they were at a certain park. Also, the people we served could get messages to the Hope team if they needed immediate assistance with things such as substance abuse treatment, detox or mental health services. During their contract with the city of Tempe, G4S had truly become an extension of the system of care that we provided throughout the city. So I was really pleased with just the pilot that I had the experience with. And I'll turn it back over to Commander Smith.
Thank you, Nikki. I unmuted myself, so here we go. If we can go ahead and advance the slide on impact of resources. So when the pilot program was over and, and we took a look at, you know, the conclusion of it, that ended in mid to late June. And since that time, we've tried to provide proactive park patrols to, to our parks. And the impact on that is being felt currently. And we also may be not only feeling it within the Police Department, but the Parks Department, the Hope Team, and as the mayor alluded to, we're receiving, you know, feedback from the community because there was a void there. People were used to seeing our park security officers there. I want to provide some context to some of the work that they did. Right now, currently assigned to our Uniform Services Division for first responders, officers that are able in uniform to respond out to a call is their primary responsibility. We have 150 that we can deploy at a moment's notice, if you will, that's on the schedule to, to engage in uniform first responder type activities. Keep that number in mind because when we take a look at the first five and a half months of 2020, G4S personnel conducted a little over 3,900 proactive park checks in five and a half months. When we take a look at the, the time period where we had officers filling the void, if you will, and conducting park checks, our police officers, based on time available to do it, call for service load, call priorities, things of that nature, they have only been able to complete 562 proactive park checks. So you see right then and there that having that consistent presence within a park, G4S, because that was really their primary role, was able to, to really keep our, our presence, in uniform presence and that feeling of safety in parks over 3,900 times. So the program allowed for an increase in uniform park security patrols and increase in community contacts, interactions, connecting up with services. And, and so moving forward, since the, the sunsetting of the pilot program, our ability to match private security proactive patrols to the level that G4S was able to do is just simply not sustainable. If we want to continue the citizen satisfaction survey trending in the right direction, which we saw in that trend bar earlier, we have to keep up with the crime prevention best practices in our parks. And essentially, it's, you know, more uniformed security or police visibility we have, the more prevention results, the deterrence takes place in the overall increase in, in the feeling of safety in our parks. And that's, that's really key. The feeling of safety in our parks improves. And, and really, it's those two core components of any safety program, engineering and, and education. And so moving forward, that brings us to a couple of different options that are currently before us. Right now, we have, just to put it out there, we have two park officers, two police officers that are assigned to parks. We had three, but due to budget reductions, we had to go back down to two. They are dealing mostly with the most highly complex type situations, dealing with encampments, things of that nature. So the pilot program concluded. There was no funding set aside just yet. And so any safety initiatives from this point forward is going to need a funding source. So when we take a look at our first option, things that we can do, we can maintain the status quo. We can use Tempe Police Officers to try and fill that void of providing that consistent proactive patrol. However, what that most likely wind up in is more of a reactive park security response with PD patrol officers. The reality is there's going to be a decrease in uniform security and police patrols of the park. You saw it yourself in the, in the prior slide. We went from 3,900 park checks down to 562 or thereabouts. So, you know, for 53 parks, the way we're set up right now, competing priorities and the first responder mission of, of a police officer, we really don't have the, the resources right now to sustain the level of park checks that we had. When we take a look, absent routine patrol in our parks, we can expect as time goes on, you know, I would not be surprised if we had an increase in calls for service in the parks, activity, things of that nature. And in looking back at some of our, our data, 46% of our, of our police reports taken in parks from 2015 to current date are some sort of drug-related type of call. When we look at call prioritization and our response times, just to keep in our mind a frame some of the discussion, our priority one call for a police officer, we, our response time is roughly about six minutes. A priority two call is roughly about seven minutes and 55 seconds and a priority three call is about 38 minutes and 54 seconds. And those call prioritizations and police response time are based on what type of incident we're dealing with. I throw that out there because we talk about presence in the parks and the feeling of safety and having that security personnel there. So that was the first option. We can maintain the status quo, do not have any other additional supplementary park security and attempt to patrol our parks with existing police resources. The second option that, that we can consider is we can reinstitute a park ranger program. In, we had a park ranger program here from about 2002 to 2010. We had to eliminate the program based on the budget crisis of 2007, eight, nine. So in 2010, that was the last year of our program, one position, one park ranger position cost the city roughly $54,474 in, in benefit salary, things of that nature. When we eliminated the program, we had seven park ranger positions available to us. That program in 2010 cost us about $381,318. Right now, currently, the most similar position that we have that would be a park ranger, if we wanted to just kind of get a ballpark of what that would look like, would be our current police aid position. Right now, our current police aid position, full-time employee, costs $67,857. If we wanted to model a deployment strategy, just like we had with G4S, which consists of not only line-level employees but supervision, we would want to have essentially seven positions and a sworn sergeant in the Police Department to manage that program. When we take a look at what that would cost, we're looking somewhere in the ballpark of $729,973 to provoke, to, to essentially build up a park ranger program similar to what we had in the past. The thing to remember about that is to create something like that, there is going to be a prolonged go-live date because we're going to, it's going to take some time to hire the right candidate. We have to conduct background checks. We have to equip and train and onboard new employees. So we're looking at anywhere realistically between a year to a year and a half to actually a go-live date for a park ranger program. And it's, and it's, it's an expensive option. The third option that we can consider is using G4S in the, in the same fashion that we have. Right now, they can provide continued coverage of 22 hours, seven-day-a-week coverage. It would cost us, the last supplemental we put in would be about $400,000. That would cost, or be able to provide eight to 10 security officers and supervisors. With that, and speaking to our, our G4S manager liaison, quite honestly, we can have immediate re-implementation if, if that's the direction that the mayor and council would like to go. We kind of discussed it. G4S has a proven track record, not only with the city and municipal security, but during the pilot program, it was very successful. As Nikki discussed, they are recognized and develop relationships to be part of that holistic human services delivery continuum of care. They already have the existing infrastructure and we have the existing infrastructure in terms of radios, uniforms and, and understanding of, of the park process and the system itself. They have the specialized training that we talked about earlier. And when we talk about the type and level of security officer, G4S personnel that were selected to engage in the, in the park program, they're a little bit of a higher caliber and better-trained employees compared to a traditional security officer that one would think of. They, they meet standards and expectations higher than, than what would be expected of just a, a run-of-the-mill security officer. And so we take a look at, you know, what, what kind of services and expertise and mission does a police officer have versus a park ranger versus a private security individual? And so what it looks like is G4S is that right blend of, of training, skills and delivery of safety services without having to tax the finite resources of a police department in a city. And so, as I mentioned, if that's the direction the, the council would like to go, they can be operational probably about 50% capacity in about two weeks, 100% capacity in about three weeks. Most of the G4S, want to point out, are former military veterans or law enforcement. So retaining G4S in the same capacity, you know, it does have the byproduct, if you will, of supporting veteran employment. So as, as we kind of bring this to a close of the options provided, in order to continue to improve the feeling of safety in city of Tempe parks, which is truly what we're trying to accomplish here by this, the strategic goal 1.23, it's the opinion and recommendation of not only the Police Department, but the Parks Department, Parks and Rec, Human Services Department, that strong consideration should be given to re-initiating a park security program using the uniform security in the same form or fashion that we have. The pilot program and the service of G4S, quite honestly, has been stellar. They demonstrated that increased security presence in our 53 parks and preserves yielded increased service to our community. They connected up people with a lot of different resources. They became a fixture in our parks and developed really good positive relationships. At times, people were more comfortable speaking to G4S as opposed to a police officer that may have been on patrol in a park. And so, and we saw the trend bar. It was headed in that right direction where, where we wanted it to. So in conclusion, I just want to thank you for, for your time. The, the holistic relationship that we have between the Parks and Rec Department, Human Services, Nikki and, and Craig is, we're, we're a good team and I appreciate them and I know our staff here does as well. And so I wanted to thank you for your time. This concludes our, our presentation. And Nikki, Craig and I are open to any questions which you might have.
Great. Thank you so much, Commander Smith. Thank you, Nikki. Thank you, Craig. Appreciate the very thorough presentation. I've got to put your hands up here. I'm going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Smith, great presentation. I sure appreciate it. Good job. I also want to give a shout out to Kim and Darlene for their, their help with the Police Department and making our North Tempe Preserve more safe. So I'm in favor of park rangers and they're unarmed. And that's, that's important to me. I'm, I'm very concerned about park security. It's a high priority for our community. Some of the photos that Phil Amorosi has sent me are quite disturbing of the park that he is right by. And I just, I think that we need to get the, the park rangers back up and running. Perhaps we could use G4S until we get the park rangers trained and then phase them, phase them out. The park rangers worked closely with our Police Department and they were part of our Tempe team, part of our Tempe family. And they really knew the, the ins and outs of, of our parks and established great relationships with our neighbors. And I just really would like to go that route. I think they're very approachable because they are unarmed and they were really great people. And maybe some of the G4S people could come back and, and be park rangers. So thank you. That's my, my two cents. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Vice Mayor Keating.
Councilmember Adams really stole my thunder on this one. I was going to say the exact same thing. You know, I, I look, I look at, um, the G4S and the program was obviously successful and helpful. And a lot of the doom saying that, that was out there never came to fruition. And it's unfortunate that there was that, but ultimately, I think they did a good job. You know, I would really like to us, and I understand, I mean, to me, there's not much of a difference between G4S and park rangers outside of the being armed. And I actually didn't know that the park rangers are going to be unarmed. So that was news to me, but it largely seems to be a distinction without a difference, except for in that one regard. But I do understand how it is a little bit easier for, for us to be behind a park ranger program than it is a private security. ranger program than it is a private security program. But I do also agree with Councilmember Adams that, you know, the parks kind of need help right now. So I would like us to use G four S, you know, as we have been for the following year, while we get the park rangers hired and trained up in the way that G four S has. I know that Councilmember Kubey made sure they had extra mental health training and things like that, so we could, you know, get some relief to the parks as soon as possible, knowing that a year from today or a year from, you know, whatever date in the near future, we will have the park ranger program back. I think that kind of alleviates a lot of my concern for immediacy, because as Councilmember Adams had pointed out, we have received some photos that frankly would upset me if they were happening in my park, and thankful that they're not, but if they were, I would be quite upset as well. So anything we can do to help our parks out as soon as possible would be great. So I would like us to do G four S for one more year, and let's get these rangers hired and trained up, and then we can rule out the program October first of two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Really quick, just a couple of things. First, Commander Smith, thank you for your work and bringing the data forward. It's really important to really understand the successes I think we've had and the impacts that I I think it's had, not just within the neighborhoods, but I think with the individuals that are there. I one hundred percent support a park ranger security program, and I I agree with my colleagues at Vice Mayor and Councilmember Adams that, you know, obviously, we need to do something immediately, and G four S seems to make that fits that bill. So I I certainly understand that. That's fine. I I don't have an issue with that. And if we do move forward into a park ranger program, which is fine, because I think that seemed to be more digestible for a lot of people, and I get that. I I just want to, I would just like our, you know, Commander Smith to think about what that park ranger looked like in two thousand and ten. Doesn't mean it needs to look the same in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. I think it would be maybe time to maybe reinvent it and and see if there's some things that we've learned with G four S and actually working with Nikki and her outreach team, if maybe there is a different way or some new things that we can implement with the park rangers, you know, to make sure that they're adequate for what we need today and in the future. So I'm I'm very open to, you know, being flexible and looking at that park ranger program to make sure it works for us and works for our neighborhoods. But again, I one hundred percent moving forward with G four S for now. I think that's an immediate need. We have a huge investment in our parks. It's so great to see our residents back in our parks again, and I know they enjoy that, and we want them to feel safe. And I think the best way to do that is create a presence, a consistent proactive presence. So we need to continue to do that, and the idea that they can build relationships, you know, and help be an extension of services and that continuum of care that we, you know, really do push as a community, I I think it's a great way to be able to do that. So that's my two cents, Mayor, and hopefully, we can move forward and and be flexible and make sure that we find something that fits for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Councilmember Kubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Commander, thank you for the presentation. You've been a very strong advocate for G four S, and I respect that. It was a very strongly advocated position, and and like the other council members, I do want to move forward with a park ranger program. I'm not, Councilmember Vice Mayor Keating suggested it in one year, but I I don't want to give it a timeframe like that because it 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 may not take nearly as long to set up. And what I'm concerned about, and you did mention that if if there are more police, then there's more feeling of security in the parks, but there are also people that feel less secure. They don't feel with the presence of of G four S officers in the park, they don't feel it's as warm and as welcoming a place to be as well. So there's, you know, that side of it. But when I think about G four S, I also, you know, I recognize there haven't been a lot of problems that like that Vice Mayor Keating suggested, that we haven't heard a lot of actual complaints, and a number of our homeless or houseless residents have have said they have great respect for G four S. So I understand that, but it's still outsourcing. Park rangers are not outsourcing. They are ours. They're our employees, and so they have more accountability. They're actually more trained, as I've come to understand the program, and we actually have more quality control because they're our employees. And that's what attracts me to the park ranger program, and I think what interests a lot of members of the community. So, you know, I'm I'm not comfortable moving forward with a one-year continuation, maybe a month or two, but I think we need to get the park ranger program on on the ground and get get it started. We've heard a lot of council interest from this over the past year or more, and, you know, I think it's time that we really move towards a a model that is more reimagines public safety. And I do have to say, too, that we have we have a new interim chief starting up in a few weeks, and I really want to know what Jeff Glover's opinion is of of this. I I think he needs to weigh in on this. I think it's really important that he weighs in on the park ranger program and G four S. I think it's really important that the that, Mr. Mayor, that your task force weighs in on this program as well. That's why I'd be very uncomfortable moving forward with, say, a one-year continuation, because we are in the midst of this task force, a new police chief, and I think we need to get those two important sources of input before we make a decision like this.
Thank you, Councilmember Kubey. I've got some comments that I've sort of just scribbled down based on what you said, but I'm going to go to Councilmember Navarro, and then I'll come back to myself, so.
Thanks, Mayor. No, I appreciate the presentation, and I agree with Councilmember Adams, her outlook, and and also trying to get to our own security down the road. I I want to tell you this. I think it's important that we have the the guards there, and I do prefer the armed guards with the training and the background and the education to de-escalate, to provide services, all that good stuff. This is something I do know, even in my job with Kings Fire Department, working, you know, within the cash shelter area, is you begin to develop a rapport with the people you see over and over again, and you're able to understand, reach out, have some benefit, true benefit, and actually have a real good history, which is obviously always beneficial for when situations do arise, and also to de-escalate situation because you already have that personal contact. So I can't really say how important this is. I know that we have some things with with PD and 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 stuff coming down the road, but I think it's important that we do continue this contract and always reevaluate after a year and and kind of see where we're at. But I think it's important for us to maintain it. I think it's important for our residents in that area to feel protected, and I think people are are really understanding the benefits of what they're seeing within the park. So I do appreciate it, and thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Navarro, thank you. Commander Smith, I got a couple of questions if you're still on the line.
Sure.
So a couple of things. One, is there any way to, actually, I've got a few questions here. Is there any way to shorten, I know you said if we did the park ranger program, it would take at least a year to get that up and running. To Councilmember Kubey's question, do you think there's any way that we could realistically shorten that timeframe?
I agree.
And I'm going to tell me no, it's fine. I just figured I would ask.
I mean, we we can always, we can always work towards, you know, over-delivering and under-promising and and, you know, when when we take a look, especially if we're looking at multiple individuals in onboarding and 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 backgrounding and and things of that nature, it 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 does take substantial amount of time. We can, we can try and fast-track it as best we can, but the timeframe I gave you was was what I felt was the most realistic.
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate that. With the current G four S, I shouldn't say current, but with G four S, is it possible for them, if we were to have them go back in in the interim while we trained up for the park ranger program, do they have to carry guns if they go back out? If we approved that contract and they got back out there in two to three weeks, is that an absolute necessity, or could they go back out there in an unarmed fashion?
My understanding is that they could go out in an unarmed fashion. That is not recommended, and since it's kind of come up, you know, we serve at the direction of council for sure, and and there's a lot of differing opinions about, you know, guns in 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 armed security versus unarmed security, things of that nature. It's important, I think, for me to point out that in eight years, we have not had one incident in Tempe with a G four S staff member using a firearm, you know, and we use G four S in our municipal buildings and things of that nature, and they are armed. G four S training is modeled after Arizona post qualifications. It's beyond the minimum DPS armed security requirements. The program is overseen by G four S staff members who are former retired law enforcement personnel. A majority of our armed security personnel are prior military. Like I said, we have multiple municipal facilities. And and here's something to just think about, and and I throw it out there, and and I think most of you, you know, you know, I I speak truth, and some people like it, some people don't, but it's it's, you know, what, based on what I'm seeing as is a police professional, some things to think about when we take a look at our park system and municipal facilities. Unlike municipal facilities, which are controlled access, they have barriers, metal detectors, things of that nature. Parks are not. They're they're a little more challenging to secure, right? They're they're a larger environment. There's no controlled ingress egress. It's not like a building in our open spaces. We've had good success with our G four S personnel in the in the current capacity, how they're operating on the contract that we have existing, and and that those security personnel with with the the armed, I guess, ability. And and it's important to note that is for defensive purposes only, in defense of themselves or or somebody else. When we take a look at use of force, because it it kind of goes hand in hand. In twenty-one months, we've had only six uses of force by park security officers, and let me repeat that, six, none involving a firearm. The six that occurred was in a space of well over fifteen thousand park checks. So when you do the math on that, we're talking a fraction of one percent. In the six uses of force, four of them was where a G four S officer came to the aid of a person that was either being assaulted or hurt or being threatened to be hurt by somebody, either by someone's hands or a weapon. When I talk about a weapon, and one of the cases involved someone that was about to be hit with a metal bicycle frame. One case where G four S, one of the six where a G four S person had to use force, he came to an aid of a police officer who was about to be assaulted. And in the other case, we had a G four S person on his lunch break, look outside the window near Clark Park and saw a female domestic violence victim being assaulted and restrained against her will, almost a precursor to a kidnapping, and he intervened, and he had to use, you know, force, not a weapon again. And then of the two of the remaining six cases involving a G four S person who were doing their job, they, two of them, in the two instances, were victims of of an assault. And so when we talk about unarmed and armed, I totally get it, but at the end of the day, I I just want to make sure we consistently set our security personnel and our park rangers up for success, because by doing so, we're setting our public up for success by allowing to have security and and the police and to have the right equipment at the right time and and giving it to you straight. You know, we live in a complex world. Parks attract a lot of people, and when we have a lot of people in areas, when we talk about programming, we're dealing with sporting events, large picnics, whatever. In a critical incident, you you need to have the right person there with the right equipment to to keep everybody safe. So I just throw those things out there to you. I know I kind of went off a little bit, but from what I heard tonight, if we want to bridge, so to speak, of what we've been doing to get us to a longer-term vision, you know, it would be my recommendation, you know, could we could we do unarmed? Yeah, absolutely. Now, unarmed means no firearm. They would still have a taser and pepper spray and stuff like that. But I I just want to point out, you know, eight years, there have not been an incident. God, 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 hopefully, God will never have an incident, right? But the world is becoming a complex place. You know, never in in many twenty-one years did I ever think I'd be dealing with a heavy rail hazmat derailment, but we had one.
That makes two of us, Commander Smith.
Yeah. So, you know, I I really, you know, want to set our people up for success because it's about the safety of of everybody in the park, and, you know, six, six uses of force, no guns, that that says something. But in the cases where it did happen, we were talking about individuals who was demonstrating assaultive behavior. And when we take that assaultive behavior and we look at, you know, what is a normal response time for for police, right? You're dealing potentially, it could be seconds, or it could be minutes, depending on where the officer is and traffic and everything else like that is. That's just the reality of it. So I hopefully, the context I I provided that answer to you kind of helps for a a fuller understanding. So.
No, I I really appreciate it, Commander. That's actually all very helpful. So thank you. Just two other quick questions that I promised Councilmember Garland, I'll get to you. One question, so if we though went to the park ranger program, and that did start up in a year, I'm assuming that those, the park rangers would be unarmed, in your mind?
Our our prior park ranger positions were unarmed, and that was at a different time, right? We're talking two thousand and one to two thousand and ten. We're talking, you know, right at the advent of tasers, right? When I first came on in nineteen ninety-nine, we didn't even have tasers. The world is a different place in two thousand and twenty. You know, so some park ranger programs out there at different municipalities, they are unarmed, right? Another thing that we would have to think about, and 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 we really have to be mindful of how we want to approach this, right? And and even that takes some time. We would need some, I would, I would assume some city code changes to allow park rangers to take municipal enforcement for civil violations. And so there may be some legislative enactments that have to be done to augment the the roles and responsibilities and duties of a park ranger.
Yeah, the only reason why I asked that question was because a lot of what council cited when talking about wanting to go back to the park ranger program was the fact that the park rangers were unarmed. So I wanted to make sure that if we, if the council did at the end of this conversation decide they want to go forward with that program in a year's time, that that was indeed the model that you were planning on implementing, because I would, I would think if you said, well, we are going to re-implement the park ranger program per council direction, but we do think that given the time, you know, that we're in now, they would need to be armed, that might, that I think changed the tenor of some of the discussion that already took place. That's why I felt the need to circle back, just to make sure that that was your, that was your plan, or if you had a different one.
Quite honestly, we serve at the at the council's direction. I think it's it's a, it's a very important topic. I think there needs to be maybe some more discussion, and, you know, and and to get to a place where everybody feels comfortable. It would be too premature if to the question of, you know, what do I envision? Really, it's not what I envision, right? It it's it's what you all envision. All I can do is provide the public safety perspective of in a critical incident, and you can pick whatever one you want to pick, and you deal with, you know, why do we have municipal security? And we all know the reason why. That 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 things can happen anywhere, and when seconds count, you you just want to have people set up for success with the right equipment and technology.
Mm-hmm. No, and I and I greatly appreciate that, and and no, I mean, I I appreciate you saying that. I know at the end of the day, it's mayor and council's discretion, but we obviously, you know, value your expertise as someone who's been in law enforcement for decades now and really has a sense as to what we can do to set up, you know, to set our people up for success, whether they be the police department, whether they be park rangers or or private security. You know, we definitely, I know no one on the council wants to put someone out there in a potentially dangerous situation, so I I appreciate you saying that, but we also really heavily appreciate your expertise and what you're bringing to this conversation. So I just wanted to make sure I said that to you on record as well. One other quick question, too, and actually, this one is for Ken Jones, then I promised Councilmember Garland, I'm going to go to you. Ken, I know our deputy city manager slash CFO, can I know that there's no money that's directly allotted to this right now? I would assume we would have to dip into some kind of contingency fund if the council really does view this as something that we want to spend money on immediately, because this was not just money that was sitting aside waiting to be spent. So I just wanted to make sure that that was the case, or maybe to ask what a potential source of funds would be, should the council decide they want to go forward with park rangers, G four S, whatever it happens to be.
Thanks, Mayor. This is Ken Jones, deputy city manager. This is Ken Jones. This is Ken Jones. This is Ken Jones. This point would be the contingency.
Okay, good. Ken, you were breaking, you were breaking up a little bit. Try again, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and council. You're correct, Mayor. The options would be to break in, tap into the contingency. The general fund contingency was established at one point five million this year, and we have spent approximately seventy-five thousand of that one point five million. The other alternative would be to ask the city manager to find other less important things in our budget to transfer the funding from there. Those are the options.
Okay. And Ken, one of the quick questions, too, and I guess, you know, Ken or, you know, or Commander Smith, is there a way, and this is the last one, is there a way where we would not, if we went with G four S, again, just by just we would not, if we went with G-Force, again, just by, just by chance, that it has to be a one-year agreement? Could it be a six-month agreement? Could it be a month-to-month agreement? Just curious, what our flexibility is when it comes to options?
Commander Smith, I assume that, that existing contract may have a clause that allows us to extend it, but I'm not sure.
I don't want to give a definitive answer, because I'm not 100% sure either. I do believe there may be some room to piggyback on to the existing contract, but it would take some additional research, and I think maybe by our, our legal department.
That sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Councilmember Garland.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I have a couple of questions. So I appreciate the presentation. There's a lot of information in there, and it was great to read this stuff ahead of time. So thank you so much. I was just looking at numbers, and Ken will probably correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like that if we, that we had the G, I'm sorry, the park rangers in 2010 at 381,000, it would probably be about 450,000 now, if we were, like inflation. So it's all kind of about in the same amount of money as the G-Force, not too far away, which is great. So I just wanted to kind of just ask that. But so you were saying that there were six incidents, or a few incidents that the G-Force has had, and they've never pulled a gun. This is, but that would also then say that there, there weren't instances where they felt like they would have to pull their gun or use their gun. I'm just trying to look at that between, you know, the G-Force carrying a gun and the park rangers not carrying a gun. You know, did the G-Force ever feel like there was some day where they thought, oh, you know, this might be an uncomfortable situation? Do you know?
I, I don't. What I do know from reading the reports and being briefed on things, I mean, each, each is a case-by-case basis, right? And, you know, communication and de-escalation and, and a continuum of, of tactics before you, God forbid, have to get to a situation like that, i- is different in all aspects of it. You know, in, in the instances that we, we covered there, taser and OC was appropriate. So I really can't answer your question with specificity, other than how I answered it.
Okay, thank you. So the park rangers would be carrying then the taser or the OCs? Will they, what will they, what do they typically carry? I, I don't remember the park ranger program, so.
Yeah, the recommendation would be definitely at a minimum OC and a taser, just like, just like our police aides.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. And then, you know, I, I, I agree with them, with Councilmember Cubey was saying that it would be great to wait to get some input from our interim chief when he comes in. I think that would be really helpful. I also think, you know, we might get some other kind of direction from the public safety, the task force that the mayor is putting together. There might be some other direction there also. One other thing I just want to throw out that Councilmember Cubey had mentioned this before, about, you know, one of the things that we could do, instead of cars to kind of save money, to bring whatever program we have in, is using e-bikes instead of cars, so they can get around the park faster and easier and using something like that. So I just want to just put that out there also, because I just thought that was an excellent idea. But I don't have any other questions, so I appreciate, and thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Um, all right, and that was a lot of discussion, council. We really appreciate everyone from staff, you know, being able to bring in on this and provide a lot of.
Hi, this is Councilmember Adams. Can I just add a few more things that I thought of?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, sorry to interrupt you.
No problem.
Apologies. Okay. So just a, just a couple of things, Scott, I'm going to push back a little bit on, is when I worked for the city, I hired employees, and they had to have background checks and lie detector tests. And we were able to get them on board within two to three months. So I guess, you know, you know, I would like, obviously, they have to have a lot of training on top of that, but I just, I think that we could maybe shoot for a little bit quicker timeframe than a year. And I guess, you know, also, as far as them being unarmed, I mean, G-Force never needed to use their guns, and I'm thankful for that, but it also kind of supports my theory about that the park rangers could be unarmed. And the final thing is that they were city employees. I was there when the park rangers were, were up and running. And, and I got a lot of feedback from the community about how much they appreciated the park rangers, and that they weren't armed, that they were very approachable, and that park rangers were part of the Tempe team. And it was just a completely different dynamic that, that was, was happening at that time. So I just want to push back a little bit on the, the timeframe. And I think that we can make this a priority and get the park rangers, or, yeah, park rangers trained in a quicker manner. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I guess my thought is this is, I, I'm not familiar with the park ranger program. I mean, I heard good stories about it, obviously. In 2010, when I got elected, there was a lot of things that went away, and that was one of them. So I would just say this, and, and, you know, however it falls, it falls, but I truly believe that park ranger program we had in 2010, I would not expect it to look the same today. I do think the world is a different place. I think people, when it comes to a sense of security, are expecting certain things. And I do think if we want our first responders, whether they're park rangers or whether they're G-Force, they need to feel secure too. And I think that's part of our responsibility. So I am very open to what that looks like, armed or unarmed. I just want to put that out there, Mayor, that I think that there can be some discussion of what that looks like, because it's, it's just not the same. I don't think we should expect the park ranger program to look like it did in 2010 and 2020 moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Councilmember Navarro.
Thanks, Mayor. Now, I would definitely have to agree with Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I do think that the program would evolve into something a little bit different than we had in the past. And, you know, obviously, the discussion, when we talk about costs, a hybrid of maybe a combination of both. Obviously, we're in some unique times, especially when we have the ability to do, offer aid and to offer other resources besides just policing within those parks. I think it's obviously that it's a unique opportunity that I think would help our police departments, our police department out. So I'm, I'm anticipating discussion. We'll, we'll have some more information when we go down that road on park rangers, G-Force, hybrid of both, however that looks like. And then also talking about the funding source presently and in, in the times ahead of us, what that's going to look like, because I, as I've always said, and especially for this year, our core values that we have to provide for our citizens, what we provide with public safety, water, public works, trash pickup, all those core things, we have to make sure that, as our city is growing, that we're ahead of the game. And I think that this is one part of it. So I look forward to that discussion. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. I've got a couple of other councilmembers I'm going to go to, but I was going to just quickly ask, Mr. City Manager, is there a way that we think that we can bring this back, if we wanted to delay this a little bit, just to get more information? Is there a way that we could bring this back to the November work-study session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. The answer is yes. I think, given some of what we're hearing and, and thinking about the direction that we've received, or at least what appears to be the beginning of direction of what we've heard, there's, there's a lot of things that we would want to follow up on and provide additional information on. So absolutely, I mean, I, I think it would be helpful to create a list of, of specific follow-up items that we can look at and research and come back at some, you know, time in the not-traditioned future to provide additional information for this council.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm going to let my other colleagues get in here, and then I will make a determination at the end. Councilmember Cubey, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I feel better having heard from the city manager, because it was going to be interesting to see how you threaded the consensus here, because I didn't feel like there was necessary consensus move forward right now with renewing the contract. So I really appreciate that we're going to take, it seems like there needs a consensus to at least step back. And I think it's so important that our new police chief and, and possibly, depending on the timeframe, that our task force weigh on this, because a lot of us have been talking about this cahoots model in Oregon that has been so successful, and it saved the city so much money, demonstrably saved the city so much money. And, you know, if we're talking about that as a possible model, and moving forward in a lot of different ways, how can we, this is the opposite of that model, right? So I recognize there's problems in the park, but I also recognize that because we had one way of doing it, it may not be the way we need to do it moving forward. So I really appreciate Andrew's suggestion. And I appreciate so much Councilmember Adams and what she had to say, and Councilmember Garland. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Vice Mayor Keating.
Yeah, I just want to echo what councilmembers Arredondo and Navarro said. I'm definitely open to having a larger discussion. I do think we should renew the contract. You know, I do think we need to talk about whether they're armed, whether they're not armed. I don't think we can put a timeline on this. If, if staff is saying, look, this is going to take us a year, if they're saying, look, it's going to take us a month, then we gotta, we gotta trust them on this. I don't know what the process is, but I am open to having a larger discussion on what the finer details look like. But I would like to move forward tonight with some sort of plan to get some relief to our parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Anyone else from council with any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Yeah, Mayor, I just, I, I too, just want to confirm this, and I agree with the Vice Mayor, that, you know, we need to make sure we have coverage now. And I'm very open to have a larger discussion of what it's going to look like in the future, but I feel like we can't afford to have a gap. So I, I would suggest we move forward with G-Force, whether it's a longer or shorter contract, but I think having immediate coverage now is really important. I agree with Vice Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Anyone else from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Adams.
Yeah, I agree that we need to have coverage right now, immediately. So I'm supportive of G-Force getting back into the parks and then transitioning into a park ranger program. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess my only thing is, on my end, and I guess this would just, you know, kind of go back either to, you know, to Commander Smith and to our deputy city manager, Mr. Jones, is what options do we have in the contract with G-Force? Because I do, I definitely understand everything that council was raising about wanting to get coverage. I know we've, you know, this is one of the reasons why I wanted to have this conversation in the first place. We're getting a lot of emails from residents who are just, you know, concerned. And I think the concerns they have are very much legitimate, and they do want to get some kind of monitoring back in the parks, you know, ASAP. At the same time, I also understand Councilmember Cubey's concern about locking us in for another year. So I just want to see if there's some flexibility that we can have, whether it's a shorter contract or a month, or a month-to-month. I know many times that a month-to-month, you end up paying a little bit more because you're not signing the longer-term deal. But I guess I just want to go back and find out whether or not that's the case. And maybe that's the kind of thing, Mr. City Manager, we can work out in, you know, we can get some information on within the next week, so we're not delaying this long. I just would feel, I, I'm just personally uncomfortable with saying we need to sign another one-year agreement with G-Force tonight, based on the, the, sort of the depth of the conversation we're having. But I would like to do something more quickly if we can, recognizing councilmember concerns.
Mr. Mayor, this is Ken Jones. I, I heard you invoke my name, so I'll respond briefly. I, I believe, and Commander Smith could correct me, I believe that the amounts he gave you were, were annualized. At, at most, we're looking at three quarters of a year. So I think, as the city manager stated, if, if that's the direction you want, which is come back to us in very short order, with the cost it would take to get G-Force in there in short order, and for what period of time, and then how soon we could get information on what the cost would be for a fully developed park ranger program, I think we could get back to you very quickly with those estimates.
Thank you, Ken. What would be the best method to do that by? Would that be through some kind of, you know, Friday packet memo, or some other kind of conversation of just trying to figure out the vehicle where council would get that information and be able to make the decision?
Well, we could ask the city attorney's office, but because it's contract-related, and we're talking about whether we can extend a contract or have to go out to bid, I believe you could get that information in your next executive session, but I would let the city attorney comment on that.
Okay. I'll turn our city attorney, Judy Balmwood, on that. Judy?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, members of council. I would be happy to do the research on that and bring that back to you at my appointee update on October 15th.
Question for the, for the council. Are we, are we comfortable? I understand, you know, wanting to really move forward, but I just think there are a lot of questions that have been raised this evening. And I mean, of course, I will go with whatever the consensus is. But would we be okay with just waiting a couple of weeks to let Judy bring that information back to us?
Mayor, I'm not. I mean, I want to move forward with it. That's kind of it. I'm, I'm happy to wait a year. That's what staff is saying. It'll take a year. You know, again, the problem is now, not, we'll come back for a discussion in two weeks. And then we'll certainly, I, I'm just not, no.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's see, let me just make sure I can keep, I can keep track of everyone here. Hold on here. All right, see, hold on here. Okay, I just saw a bunch of hands go up at the same time. I'm just going to start at the bottom and move my way up. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with the Vice Mayor. I think that we need to implement G-Force now. I am open to doing it for a year. If staff has come back and said it's going to take them a year to, to reestablish that, that's great. If there's a way that we can do a different type of contract, that maybe is six months, nine months, I'm open to looking at that, but I'm, I'm not willing to wait. I think this is something, an issue that we have now, and it's really important that we take care of it and keep our parks safe. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Next up, I've got Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'm, I'm in agreement also that we need to act on this now. This is, in, in my, what I'm seeing, what I'm hearing, what I've been through, this is in lines with our values. This is in lines with what we're, we're going to try to achieve, in, in my belief. And the only thing that can happen is we make it better. I think with the process of going through or changing directions or all that good stuff, we still stay exposed in those areas, when we can actually add benefit in those areas. So I think that we need to extend the contract for that year, because the process will take some time. I know we could try to move expeditiously if we needed to, but still there is gaps when it comes to, to those things. And as we go into the, the nicer weather coming up ahead, it brings more activity, more people out to the parks, too. And I think it's just in our best interest to go forward.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember Cubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, you know, my concern is that we're just at the start of this reimagining public safety conversation with the task force that you're leading and creating, along with, you know, I'll be on that, as well as Vice Mayor Keating. And so if we lock ourselves into a one-year contract, we basically set ourselves back if we decided to take a different pathway. And one thought, one thought occurs to me, that we may not be necessarily talking about park rangers in some instances. We could be talking about expansion of CARE-7, or expansion of the HOPE team. So this is something we're, we're embarking on, and I could see a one- or two-month extension, but if we, if we go into a year extension, we're already setting ourselves back for, in, at a time where we've really committed to, to reimagining how we think about public safety. And it's, it's exactly the wrong trajectory, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that I'm not comfortable with going with a year contract with G-Force at all. I am comfortable with getting them into the parks immediately for now, and then the combination of the task force that you're going to lead, Mayor Woods, and I just would feel better getting that information. We have a new police chief coming in, getting his feedback on it. But I do think we need to get G-Force out there right away. And, and, but not for a year. I think we can do it quicker than, than the one year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Garland.
I, I agree that we need to get something in there now. You know, our job is public safety and taking care of the residents in our community. And so I don't, I don't want to have a lag in service in our parks, like the others have said, my other council colleagues have said, so I agree with that. I don't know how long the contract is. I, it sounded like you all were trying to, like, Ken Jones was going to look into, or somebody was going to look into seeing if we could have it less than a year. But either way, I think. I think we need to have that system. And I think being able to come up with, I did like how Councilmember Arredondo Savage said something about a hybrid, or maybe a combination of the Park Ranger with something else if we needed, or reimagining what this Park Ranger program looks like, because things have changed. So I did like that idea, but I do think we need to have safety, or people feeling safe in our parks, and so I do think we need to have the G4S or somebody in there now. And however short we can make that contract, I think would probably be better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the only, the only issue is going, going here, I think the only two options that are on the table right now, from what, what's being discussed, I mean, obviously, I was sort of, you know, presenting a third option, is, you know, there's, there's a group of council members that want to go forward, for what it sounds like. I'm going to, and obviously, correct me if I'm incorrect here. Vice Mayor Keating, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, and Councilmember Navarro would like to go forward now and just go ahead and go for the year contract with G4S. If I'm incorrect, I guess stop me now. Is that, is that, is that a correct assessment of what you're saying?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor Keating.
Isn't it true we can't do both? We can't get G4S back in the parks without agreeing to the terms with G4S tonight, right? Like, it's not, it was a mutually exclusive, or am I misunderstanding something?
Well, I, I, it's a great question, Vice Mayor Keating. I think the thing that, the thing that I was basically asking for clarity on from, from Mr. Jones, was just trying to find out what our options were in terms of what the contract is. If we have to re-up with G4S, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to that, I'm just saying, is the only option one year or nothing? Or is there an option for a shorter contract? Or is there an option for a month-to-month contract? That was sort of the information I was trying to get, and why I was saying that I would prefer to go with a two-week delay to October 15th. That was sort of what I was suggesting.
If you're asking. So procurement rules, I believe, allow the city manager to enter into a contract that is needed by the city, and you can retroactively approve that contract. So based on the direction you give the city manager tonight, so for instance, if you were to say, city manager, enter into the shortest-term contract you can, with terms similar to what we paid before, and then come back to us so that we can get people in there immediately. If that's month-to-month, under the same terms, that's great. If it's three months, that might be satisfactory. In no circumstances should it be over a year. As a matter of fact, you might say, if it's over six months, we want you to come back and check with us. Don't approve that on your own.
Okay. Vice Mayor Keating, did that answer your question, or?
Yeah, it does. I just wanted to be clear that, yes, that is fine. I just, it's hard to split the baby in this conversation, or talking about contracts and stuff. My position has not changed, you know, as telling us it will take a year to bring on these Rangers, explore what Park Rangers look like in 2020, 2021, and get them trained to a level that we're comfortable with, because we know training is so important. So I'm fine with the year contract, but if there is some, you know, shell game we can do to get them in the parks tomorrow, without signing the year contract, or agreeing to your contract tonight, you know, I'm okay with that. I don't, I mean, if they said it took six months, then I'd be like, all right, we need six months. That's it. But, you know, what, the fastest we can do it, the better, but I strongly believe we had to get somebody in the parks immediately. If that means saying the only option's a year, then I will be in support of that, but again, if there's no way to finagle it, that's okay.
Okay. No, thank you, Vice Mayor. That's very helpful.
This is Ken. If I could...
No, don't worry, please.
I'm sorry, I don't see the hand raising for me, because I'm a participant, not a moderator here. But I, what I stated earlier was, assuming that we can extend the existing contract, the city manager can't violate procurement rules and just pick somebody out of a hat. Assuming the procurement rules allow for an extension of the contract, he can do that on his own, and then come back to you to have it approved retroactively. So like I said, if you gave the city manager that direction and said, if you can get people in the parks under nearly the same provisions that were provided in the existing contract, we would like you to do that under the shortest term possible, I believe he can do that. He can't violate procurement rules. If we don't have the ability to extend that contract and have to go back out to bid, he will have to come back and get your approval.
Okay. No, Ken, that's very helpful. Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, thank, thank you, and thank you, Ken, for clearing that up, and I agree with that. With going forward, as I said, and in my vision, it's, it is the safety concern, it is the, the stuff that we're doing, we're seeing, we're, we have been educated on tonight on, on those experiences. I totally agree with the task force and what you're doing, and the vision for us and the future, but I'm, I'm going to tell you that the process is going to take some time. It's not going to happen very quickly, because the discussion and what's going to be in front of us is not, is not going to happen overnight. We talk about increasing CARE-7, we are trying to do that, as my other job in the City of Phoenix, with our CER team. It comes with qualifications and people and hiring, and under those qualifications and, and other spec, and other guidelines, this process is going to have some length to it. So with, with me, I'm comfortable extending, and if it does happen, we can shorten it or whatever, I could be fine with that if something better comes up, and I'll let the city manager touch on that, but even if it goes a year, I'm very comfortable with that, because I know a thorough process and getting ramped up, I would love to have some overlap, to be honest with you. And I think that's smart for us, and it's smart for the city to do that, and I think this is very important for us. So that's where I'm at, and I hope others can understand. And then I, the other question, Mayor, is when you're going through counting the votes, so to speak, I didn't, I thought Councilmember Garland was in favor of going forward. I don't want to speak for her, and then I was not, I was really unsure with Councilmember Adams. She seemed like she kind of wanted both ways also.
So, so, Councilmember Navarro, thank you for that. The main thing that I was trying to, trying to kind of, you know, do over here on my end, kind of just taking a little bit of tally, was it sounded like yourself and Councilman, yourself, Vice Mayor Keating, and Councilmember Arredondo Savage were saying, we're comfortable tonight going forward with the one-year agreement, and just sort of being done with this, and getting people right back in the parks. What I heard Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Garland say is, we do want to get people back in the parks, but we would be looking for potentially a shorter-term agreement, which is why I was turning to Ken, you know, and Commander Smith to find out, is a shorter-term agreement even possible? So that's why I thought what they were saying was frankly, a little bit different than the other three.
Good.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say this, I, my first pick would be to do a year, give our staff the time to put together what it's going to look like, incorporate your task force moving forward. I don't think this is going to be anything that we can do immediately, in the sense of understanding what our Park Ranger system is going to look like in the future. I think that's going to need some time, and I think we don't even have the specifics on that yet, but I do 100% agree that we have to get G4S in our parks immediately and keep them there. I don't want to create a gap. They've worked hard to build relationships, we need to continue to build on those relationships, and I think the longer we wait, it's a mistake. I think Joel said it perfectly when he says, you know, this is Tempe values, this is what Tempe is all about, and we have always prided ourselves on our neighborhood parks, and to not continue to protect that investment and to make sure our residents feel safe in our parks, to me, is a big mistake. So yes, I would agree that a year contract, I'm totally comfortable with that. If they come back and say, hey, you know what, we can do it for six months, if that makes people easier, then I'm okay with that, too. I just want to make sure that it is something that gives our staff enough time to do what they believe is best, to put forth a program that we are going to be proud of and all embrace now and in the years to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember QB, and then I'll try to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to reiterate, we've heard this comment from a few of the council members, that we really do need to talk to our interim-elect police chief, as he will be living with this program, and I really am opposed to a one-year contract, especially we're in this pivotal time, where we need to really look at, what are the operations that we are needed in the parks, and how do we fund that, and how do we, we institutionalize that? So setting up a structure for a year, it's going to make it harder to move out of that, and it's, you know, it's just non-responsive to another community need that we've heard, where people have said they feel the parks have become too militarized. Now, there is one option that we haven't discussed, and that is restoring one of the police, the park officer positions, which would enhance the capacity of our police officers. So we have two now, add one to the park officer position, and that's something, again, that I would like to hear Jeff Glover, and hear what he has to say about it, but under no circumstances do I support a one-year, a one-year apportionment, although I could understand a few months, but a one-year, to me, is not acceptable.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilmember QB. All right, so what it sounds like, Mr. City Manager, I'm going to, I'll run this by you and Ken, just for a final. What it sounds like, the council does want to go about, you know, getting G4S back in the parks quickly, if we can, and I know Commander Smith talked about, you know, in two weeks, we could be up to 50% capacity, in three weeks, we could likely be up to 100% capacity, but I really would like to, but it also sounds like the consensus on the other side was kind of saying, we would like to find out whether or not, find out first of all, what the terms of the contract with G4S are, if they're able to be extended, and obviously, if there is capacity for a shorter-term contract. You know, whether that be, you know, once again, a six-month contract, a three-month contract, a month-to-month contract, but I really would like to see, but it sounds like the group, you know, A, wants to get the, you know, wants to see if we can start moving in that direction to get people back, to get G4S back in the parks, so our residents can have some additional monitoring and security of their neighborhood park, but also, I think we just, we just, as quickly as possible, need more information about what the status of that contract is, and can we get a shorter contract before we completely go forward?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate that summary. We can take that. We will do the exploration in conjunction with the Police Department and City Attorney's Office, and of course, budget and our CFO will look at it clearly from a, where do we find the funds mid-year perspective, and have that conversation with the Police Department as well. So yes, we will look at term, we will look at, at timing, and all of those questions. Pursuant to our previous discussion, Mr. Mayor, you still want us, however, to come back and have a deeper discussion with regards to the Ranger program and all of that as well, correct?
Yeah, because it did sound like the council does want to have that discussion, you know, about what the Ranger program, I definitely, I mean, there was a strong consensus about doing the Ranger program long-term, but I think that, you know, we would definitely want to get more information regarding what that program would look like.
Okay, very good. Yeah, we, we will plan on that as well.
And just also, to make sure, you know, I just quickly reiterate, you know, the other thing that the council said was, that, you know, we just, that we do start moving forward on this immediately to get G4S back in the parks. I do want to make sure that I do, make sure that's captured, so we should begin to, you know, look at the contract, but immediately do outreach to them and get them up and running again. So I do, I definitely want to make sure that is also spoken for the record.
Understood. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you. That, that was a great conversation. All right, next up here, item 2F, eviction prevention task force, and I'll call upon staff to make a presentation on that, or do, I know there were council members who requested this be added, did they want to speak to it prior to staff making a presentation?
Mr. Mayor, this is Lauren. I'd be happy to hear staff's presentation at first.
Okay, great, wonderful. And I see Mr. Sheng up on the screen, so. And Mr. Sheng, it looks like you, either you're muted, or we just can't hear you.
The answer is I was double muted, dreaded double mute. Thank you, Mr. Members of council. In thinking about a lot of the financial pressures that we know are going to be coming along in the next weeks and months, specifically with the end of certain moratoriums that have been declared with respect to evictions, that's a looming issue that I think council has identified in previous meetings as something that they, that they wanted to address. Pursuant to that, I had the opportunity to meet with council members QB and Adams last week. Pursuant, coming out of that meeting, we, they were, I was asked to speak to you, Mr. Mayor, about placing this on the agenda for tonight, for the consideration of the creation of a task force to address the impending evictions, and how to get good information out to tenants who are vulnerable, arm them with resources, and explore any and all other options that might, at some point, require further council action. I know that council members QB and Adams have a lot of thoughts about that, and I defer to them to provide additional detail and explanation, but I'm happy to, to provide any as well.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. The only question I have about this, and I appreciate, I'll actually, I'll say two things. One, it's definitely something I would like to be a part of, from just a conversation standpoint. I do think it's a very relevant issue, given the times, so I would love to, to work with them on that. The only thing I would say, though, is, is there any way, Mr. City Manager, I know back on August 7th, at the council retreat, we discussed the concept of, of moving from a COW kind of process to a committee structure, and I'm just wondering, is there something that you or staff sees that this might fit into the kind of upcoming committee structure, as opposed to creating a specific task force? Because then we probably want to create fewer things that are sort of outside of the boundaries of that committee system, if at all possible, but at the same time, if you don't see any place for this, the task force option may be the only way to go, but I figured I would just ask you for your perspective before we go forward.
I'm happy to offer my perspective, and if, like I said earlier, would defer to council members QB and Adams, but I think that the, the concept that, that we had briefly discussed last week, was that this wouldn't strictly be council members and city staff, as you would normally see in a council committee or a working group, that the idea of the task force would be to reach out to a lot of different stakeholders in the community, potentially justice court, constable, et cetera, a lot of different people from the Arizona Housing Coalition, so that the idea would be less of a council committee, but more of a purpose-driven task force to come up with immediate solutions, potentially, to address the impending end of the foreclosure moratorium, excuse me, the eviction moratorium. So again, it doesn't mean that we can't go through the exercise of thinking about what it might mean for future council committees, but I think that the notion behind this would be one of more urgency to, to address situations that we know are coming up in the immediate future, over the next couple of months.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Mr. City Manager, for bringing that up for us. As many of you know, evictions have been halted in the country until the end of the year, and once someone is evicted, it's really difficult to get them back in their homes. And in anticipation of the evictions being reinstated January 1st, we would like to form this eviction prevention task force, and it wouldn't be made up of all council members, or that many council members, it'd be subject experts in our community. The New York Times article has reported tens of millions of households could be at risk after the moratorium is lifted, and so we just want to get ahead of, get ahead of this and have the key stakeholders on the task force that can identify services and prevent evictions. And I don't know if Councilmember QB would like to add to that?
I would love to. Councilmember Adams, and thank you so much for your leadership on this issue. So the city manager really reflected so well, our conversation that we had last week, and knowing that January 1st is going to be a devastating date in our history, because eviction forec, eviction moratoriums will end, and as I have understood, talking to Karen Lathan, one of the constables in Tempe, she said that the eviction writs and notices are not going to be, are not going to be fanned out in a, you know, over the course of a few weeks. It's going to happen all in one, in two days. It's going to be pretty devastating, and we wanted to be ahead of the curve, and there are a lot of people, obviously, talking about this issue. There are folks, for instance, the Honorable Shannon Ellis, who many of us know, she is at the Watts College of Community Solutions, and this is a concern of hers. There's Arizona Housing Coalition. There's a eviction, actually, an eviction meeting taking place two days in November that, that a number of staff, and I know that Councilmember Adams and I are going to attend, so this is meant to be a short-term planning exercise, so we can really just push out all the ideas and, that we can think about involving community outreach, and using the research that the New America Project brought us, which shows the heat maps of the housing eviction losses anticipated in our city and in our county. We're one of three counties in the country that have that information. So it's really an attempt to kind of come together pretty quickly, bring stakeholders, and we'd love to have your participation, Mr. Mayor, bring stakeholders together to develop the best plans we can, and also, maybe to give a little information for the legislature when they come into session, because Mitzi Epstein has been a long proponent of having a tenant bill of rights, and so that may be something she... bill of rights, and so that may be something she wants to push forward. So, I would love to have Mitzi Epstein on that small group. But it's not meant to be a long-term working group, but a task force that we can really sit down, bear down, and come up with some really actionable solutions and planning exercises.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember QB. I think that's my only thing, and I think you really hit upon it at the end. The biggest thing I want to make sure that we do, if we embark upon this tonight, is make sure that we kind of do a very kind of clear kind of beginning and end of the process that would end quickly. Only because, as an example, with the task force I'm talking about with public safety, I mean, we really are talking about, you know, six meetings over a two-and-a-half-month process, and then it would end quickly, and the recommendations would be swift. So, I think that's the biggest thing. I just want to make sure that we are not kind of going outside of our kind of newly discussed committee structure anymore than we actually have to. So, all I would ask, whatever, is that if we go forward with this this evening, that we can really get a very clear end date, within the next, I would say, by the end of this calendar year, so we can really get the recommendations done quick, given that we've talked about this being an urgent need. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It absolutely would have to be done by the end of the year, because the January 1st is coming soon. So, I think that we would move very quickly on this and try to prevent all the evictions we can and protect our health and safety of our residents.
Sounds good. Vice Mayor Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually, coming into this discussion, I was very opposed to this, not because I don't know it's not a problem, but because we are moving to the committee system, and I wasn't as good for the committee type of deal, and I thought this was kind of a working group by another name, which I felt was going to be a slippery slope. However, given what Councilmember QB, Councilmember Adams, and yourself have said, you know, you set a date to end it by the end of the year, and if it's not ended, I'd even be comfortable then with turning it over to the appropriate committee. So, honestly, you guys have changed my mind on this matter. So, I'm okay with it, as long as there's firm goals, a hard date, and if you don't meet your hard date, then the appropriate committee can pick up the ball and run with it. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I was kind of along the same lines, too, because I thought it was more going to be like a working group, and I thought we were moving, and I'm a big advocate for our new committee structure, and I think that's a good thing. I do realize there is an immediate need, not only for evictions, but I think evictions also are going to create a lot of foreclosures on homes, too. So, I think that somehow, we can't just think about just the residents, but the people that are owning those properties and what that impact means to them. So, I don't know if there's a way to wrap that in there in that discussion a little bit. But, you know, honestly, I think it would be great to just really understand what our issue is, just in Tempe. We've heard a lot of data over the last few months, mainly kind of more county-wide in what it comes to foreclosures and some evictions. So, just to be able to get those specifics and the data that goes along with it, I think will be really beneficial. And the fact that it's just a short-term task force, you know, I can get behind that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Councilmember Navarro?
Oh, it's me. Okay. No, I totally agree with what you guys are trying to go after, and I agree with what is said with Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Keating, and Councilmember Arredondo Savage. And I think you guys sound like you're on the right track. It sounds like you're going to get the experts out there, the people who are in the industries or affected, all that good stuff. I think there's some vast good information, from what I understand. I've done a little digging into this area, and it's intriguing on what facts are out there and what direction is good for us. So, I agree with the timeline, and if it goes past it, it goes to the appropriate committee.
Sounds good. Councilmember Garland?
Sounds like a great idea, and I think it's a necessary thing, so I appreciate you guys doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like Councilmember Adams, Councilmember QB, you've got your consensus to go forward.
Everybody, for your support.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. All right, next up here, we have Item 2G here, which is Future Agenda Items. Really quickly, Councilmember Adams, I know you and I discussed something before the meeting. Would that fall under 2G, or is that under Committee of the Whole?
That would be new items.
New items. So, let's see here. Okay, so that's 4B. Okay, so I wanted to make sure I wasn't skipping you. So, all right. So, council, under 2G, any future agenda items? Anyone would like added?
Oh, Mayor Woods, I think I misspoke, because I...
Oh, it is 2G.
I'm sorry.
Go for it.
Yes. So, I do have a new item I would like to bring up, a future item. I would like us to look at a 3-1-1 task force made up of our residents and key staff members to look at how our end-users are experiencing 3-1-1 and what improvements can be made. And because 3-1-1 is a great system, and I just want to see if we can make it even better, bringing it into a higher level. So, that would be something that I want on a future agenda item. Thank you.
Sounds good. So, that would be a discussion about 3-1-1. Mr. City Manager, how's that sound to you?
We will be happy to put together information about 3-1-1 and get it to you at a future work-study session, issue review section of the work-study session. Just so I understand from Councilmember Adams, what timeframe are you looking at for this? I only ask because I know that the remaining work-study sessions in November and December are already filled, pretty filled up, and I'm thinking that realistically, it may not be until January, February, if that's okay.
Yeah. Can we shoot for January on it, Andrew?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
To that point, Mr. Mayor, to that point, it's Lauren. I totally support Councilmember Adams and having an issue review on 3-1-1. But I understood, maybe, that when we had our calendaring session, that we knew we didn't have that many work-study sessions, that we were going to consider, if not adding a complete separate work-study session, that we might add one on to a council meeting coming up in October, November, December, because I'm kind of concerned, when we have really heavy loads on our work-study sessions, we tend to get tired, and we're not... I don't do my best thinking when it's really late. So, I didn't know whether that's a possibility to add. Not to speed up the 3-1-1 discussion, but just generally to add another work-study session to an already-scheduled regular council meetings. The RCMs have been very quick lately. They've been going, you know, an hour, an hour and a half. So, just wanted to relieve the pressure.
So, thank you, Councilmember QB. I still have a quick question for our City Attorney, Judy Baumann, actually. I was going to ask you, are we allowed to have that conversation right now, or is it not agendized?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I would recommend that we have it agendized specifically, so that you can have a more robust discussion. However, I will defer to the city clerk in case that there is a meeting that was contingently scheduled that we have not yet put on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, it's Lauren again. I just got word from staff that there is a work-study session added to another meeting in December, so I appreciate... I do want to push back a little bit, or City Attorney, just that we're talking about issue review sessions, and things are getting bubbled up. I think it would be appropriate to talk about how we un-bottle that. So, anyway, but there apparently is one signed to December to alleviate the pressure.
Mr. City Manager, then, could we have the 3-1-1 go on that, that agenda?
This is the city clerk. The meeting that Councilmember QB is referring to is December 3rd, and we have six items, I believe, pending for that work-study session. It's also the same night as a regular council meeting, so it is going to be a split session. But if we want to add another item, we can do that. Just bring your snacks.
I would be supportive of it, or adding, like Councilmember QB said, adding another meeting if we need to.
Well, I think the only challenge is that, you know, I said, one's already been added, but I know that we just have to have a conversation, you know, as our City Attorney is saying, that has to be agendized on this subject. So, that's the only reason I'm kind of loathe to get too deep into it. So, but I understand the concern that's being raised. But I know for our November work-study, we're already up to 10 items. So, I mean, so that's a long night. And so, I understand the point that she's making.
Perhaps we could add a calendaring meeting on October 15th for half an hour, for the council's consideration.
Council, with that, I mean, that sounds like a good compromise. Would the council be okay with that?
That's a good idea.
Yes.
Mayor, I'm against it. I want to be clear, not because I don't support Councilmember Adams's idea, but, I mean, we just had a calendaring meeting. We just added another meeting. I mean, let's... Come on.
Okay. I'm just going to... I'm making notes over here. Anyone else about the calendaring meeting want to weigh in?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we necessarily need a half an hour, maybe just 10 minutes or so. But I think it is worth looking at issue review, work-study session flow, and what we have planned. So, we didn't plan as many work-studies as we typically have in past years. So, it's just, to me, it's worth a 15-minute discussion.
Here's what I'm wondering, if this is okay for me to do with council. I mean, I'm happy to look at the items that are scheduled for the rest of the year, and then report back to all six people on council and let you all know what I think. I'm more than happy to do that and see if I can work with staff to move some things around. I think I could probably work with Brienne and work with Carla to see if we can get that done, potentially, without another calendaring meeting. Would that be okay with you?
I'm good with that, Mayor.
Sounds good to me, Mayor.
Sounds good.
All right. I'm on it. I'll just add it to my calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm the City Manager.
For the purpose of scheduling with staff and being adequately prepared for this 3-1-1 discussion, I mean, we can... If staff knows that the presentation is in December, or knows that it's in January, that'll just affect the time in which they have to do it. Is it the sense of yourself and the rest of council that you'd rather see it in December? Or would you be okay with waiting until January? Either way, like I said, we can do it. I just, it shouldn't be something... I'd like to give staff ample time to prepare adequately, and it shouldn't be, in my opinion, dependent on when the next calendaring meeting is. Because in either event, even if there isn't another work-study session, I'd like to be able to give them a date certain. I just think that'd be helpful.
Yeah. And I'll... Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm going to let Councilmember Adams weigh in, but I would say, I would prefer for it to be in January, just to make sure that we're not, for two reasons. One, that we're not crunching too much stuff and creating, you know, five or six-hour work-study sessions, whatever, that are going to be very tough on all of us, council and staff included, and members of the public who have to watch. But also, just for your reason as well, I want to make sure we're giving staff ample time to prepare a quality presentation. So, if Councilmember Adams, if that's still okay with you, I would prefer it to be January.
Sure. I'm okay with January. I just, I mean, do you think, I guess, Mr. City Manager, do you think that we need a big 3-1-1 presentation? Because I'm not trying to make this more difficult for staff. I just want to get the residents involved in the process and provide feedback to 3-1-1, so we can make the necessary changes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Adams, I guess I just don't have a sense, just sitting here, knowing what that entails in terms of staff time. So, without having a chance to confer with the staff who would be able to present something to council as an actual basis in advance of that conversation, my understanding is you're asking for a consideration of a potential citizen's 3-1-1 task force. If that's all it is, just to have another group examine the workings of that particular city function, it may not require a lengthy presentation. But, by the same token, you know, it's... We have to come up against some of these scheduling issues, anyway, and I'd rather err on the side of being thoughtful about the presentations we made to council when possible.
Sure, sure. And that's fine. We could do, I mean, we could do January and have them do a presentation. I'm not trying to put a bunch of extra work on them. I just want to make it, just maybe improve the system a little bit here and there. So, that's fine. I'm good with January.
Yeah. No, I really appreciate that, Councilmember Adams, because I think one of the things is, too, if we do January, it does give staff ample time to prepare a good presentation, and that will be to your liking. But also, it will give the, you know, kind of, once again, the newly-formed committee structure a chance to take shape, and we might be able to find a way to get it into that committee structure, as opposed to creating a separate group. But I think that, you know, but I appreciate your flexibility in letting this kind of play out a little bit.
Sure, sure. No problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, City Manager?
Just as a suggestion, rather than, you know, scheduling January, another thing we could do is we could work with staff and provide information about 3-1-1, some of the metrics we're aware of already, and provide that to council as a Friday Packet memo as well. That might get the ball rolling and have something for your consideration much earlier, as opposed to preparing for a presentation and trying to slot it into a work-study session.
That would be great. I'm sure, Councilmember Adams and the council, we're not going to object to getting information sooner, so...
That'd be great. So, would we do both then, Andrew? We'd have the presentation in January, but then get information in earlier in our Friday Packet?
What I was suggesting was, is that if you had the Friday Packet information, that provides what I think would be the presentation, in terms of whatever relevant metrics that 3-1-1 has, that could help, you know, council at whatever point you'd like to then go back to council and talk about, or get permission, potentially, to have your plan or your idea move forward, wouldn't be dependent on waiting on the staff information.
Okay, okay. That'd be great. Sounds good.
That sounds good to me. I see some other hands here. Councilmember Navarro?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, and it might have possibly been scheduled, but I think I talked to staff, but I want to make sure. I'd like to have a discussion on our contracts with our Rightway Maintenance, and just in terms of what maybe council expectations are going for the future, you know, when we talk about what type of maintenance we expect out of it, and even talking about what type of equipment, gas-powered versus electric. So, I'd like to have a discussion on that, and hopefully, maybe it's already scheduled, but whenever we can, fit it in. That'd be great.
All right, great. Mr. City Manager, if we can also do that as well, that'd be great.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember QB?
And I'm embarrassed, Mr. Mayor, because I was distracted, once again, by my dogs. Glad you guys didn't get to hear all that. So, can you repeat what Councilmember Navarro's suggestion was for a future agenda item?
Councilmember Navarro, would you like to repeat it?
Yes, just looking at our maintenance contracts and our expectations, possibly going forward on what we want to see out of the quality of maintenance, and then also to look at the possibilities of start trying to move towards electric versus gas-powered, and then how that would look as we go forward.
Thank you, because actually, that... I heard part of it, and it piqued my interest, because I did want to ask for future agenda item. And I was going to say 2023. No, no, seriously. It doesn't need to be this year, but early into the new year, to look at, and if you recall, the working group I had about the transition from gas-powered to electric-powered landscaping equipment, first trying to do it at our city operational level, so we can walk the talk, and then try and go outwards. We received, I think, four or five emails recently from residents really concerned about gas-powered motors and their polluting effect in the north as well. And so, I know that there's been some developments lately. Craig was excited to share that with me, but I really wanted to share that with the council and also share it with our residents. So, I don't know if they have to be broken off as separate things, but periodically, Craig has come back to us to report on where we are, because we are a testing site for a number of the companies that offer electric equipment. And so, however you see fit, Mr. City Manager, but I would love to hear the update from Craig, as he's done like every year or so.
We can certainly do that.
Okay, sounds good. I see City Managers keeping a running list here. Vice Mayor Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. It must have been like a year ago, or maybe a little bit less. I asked for some sort of, not plan, but just discussion around what happens if marijuana is legalized in the state of Arizona. I don't know if we ever got that. We very well may have, and if we have, I'm sorry. But if we haven't, I would like to have that. Obviously, it doesn't have to be before the end of the year. We got a loaded schedule. I'm not favoring another meeting. But, and if the vote goes against Prop 207, then it's a moot point. But if 207 passes, I'd really like the city to kind of get ahead of it a little bit, such as like what's happening when someone is legally smoking marijuana in a public park, or, you know, near a school, or near an official city function, something like that. And again, we may have already had it, but for the life of me, I can't remember, because I did ask for it a long time ago. So, we can do that in the new year. There's no rush on that. And of course, you know, again, if 207 goes down, then no need to consider it at all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, this is Judy Baumann, City Attorney. Vice Mayor, this is Judy Baumann, city attorney, if I might address that, we have had a collaboration of interdepartmental city staff working on this issue, and we do have this item planned to come before the council, I believe the last meeting of November or the first meeting in December.
Yep, tell you what, if the vote fails, we can quit Jennifer's item.
I like the way you think, Randy.
Love it, yeah, I do believe that Vice Mayor Keating, it is scheduled for the December work-study.
Thank you very much, I didn't see that, but I do appreciate staff coming back with it.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland? Where's your hand down now?
Nope, my hand was, no, I put it up on accident, sorry.
Okay, you got it, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Yeah, Mayor, just two cents, nothing new I wanted to add, other than to say, you know, I'm not in favor for adding more meetings, I think, you know, we just, one of the things I think we can do is you go back and you look at the list moving forward, it would be great to just make sure that we're being efficient, I know that there's things that are time-sensitive, but I love the idea that you mentioned with Councilmember Adams's item, is to maybe get some of that information to us prior, to see if that might appease us in regards to the information we're looking for, and then that might even speed up or make that meeting a little bit more efficient when it comes time to actually have that discussion, so I don't know, I just thought maybe that could be something that you could look at in regards, as you're looking forward in the future, because there's probably some things on there, just based on what people have been going through these last six months, that might look differently now anyway, so, just food for thought, and just to let you know that I'm open to, you know, making some changes if need be.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, really appreciate that, let me go here, all right, anyone else have anything else under 2G, future agenda items, I don't have anything on my end? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Adams?
Just thinking out loud, and I know Lauren, Cubby, and I talked a little bit about this, and perhaps a neighborhood advisory commission too could look at improving the 3-1-1 also, and perhaps it could involve some end-users in that group to work with them? I'm just brainstorming, which is always very scary.
No, no, don't worry, you know, I can actually, let me see, Councilmember Adams, I know as we, as the City Manager talks about getting some information together for you, I can circle back with him first thing, like maybe Monday during our standard one-on-one, and maybe, Andrew, you and I can have a conversation about, you know, about Councilmember Adams' agenda item, but also seeing if there's some way to incorporate the neighborhood advisory commission into some of what we're talking about.
That sounds good, I mean, I think what this goes to is potential content for the memo that we'll be providing in lieu of a presentation in January, if there's an opportunity to solicit input from some of the groups that Councilmember Adams has mentioned, I think I'd be happy to look into that further.
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you, all right, I'm going to go ahead here and move on here to the next item here, but thank you very much, we've got a lot of work to do before the end of the year, but I'm confident we can get it all done, and I will provide council with an update when I kind of have a chance to go through the remaining work-study agendas for the rest of the year. So the next item on the agenda is the call to the audience for Committee of the Whole items listed under sections 4A and 4B, however, there are no items under those sections this evening, so the next section is actually items in progress. Item number three, call to the audience, the city council welcomes public comment at this time for items listed under 4A and 4B, Committee of the Whole items on the work-study session agenda, there is a three-minute time limit per speaker, as I said, we don't have anything on 4A or 4B, but Madam Clerk, do we have anything, any cards?
Mayor, no cards for any of the remaining items.
Great, all right, thank you so much, all right, councilmembers, I'm going to go on to item 4C here, items in progress, updates is needed, are there any verbal updates on any of the agenda items listed under items 4C, 1 through 14? Going once, going twice, sounds like there's none, okay, sounds good, no updates here, going-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It's Lauren, I brought this up last time we had a meeting, Committee of the Whole, so this is within the Committee of the Whole topic, but, you know, I was initially opposed to the committee structure, the new structure, but now I'm all for it, just like to see it activated, and hoping we'll get updates on that soon.
Yep, absolutely, I could say, Councilmember Cubby, I was working with the City Manager or City Attorney, and I know Breann and I were working on this this week, so we should definitely be able to get you and the entire council an update on how that process is going to look at, going to lay out, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, here, item number five, Mayor's announcements, I don't have any, Mr. City Manager, any announcements?
No announcements, thank you.
Great, sounds good, item number six is our next meeting date, that's going to take place November 5th of 2020, so we'll see you all back then, and since there's nothing else, we're going to go ahead and adjourn at 7:41 PM, thank you so much, everyone, have a great rest of your night, have a great rest of the weekend.
Thank you, Mayor.